Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Lake Worth Beach Regular City Commission of Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Betty Rush?
Here. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Sarah Maliga?
Present.
Commissioner Christopher McVoy?
Here.
Commissioner Mimi May?
Present.
Commissioner Anthony Sagrich?
Present.
Thank you very much. The invocation will be conducted by Commissioner McVoy. I will lead the pledge.
Okay, not me. I forget it.
Thank you. Let's take a moment of silence to keep in our hearts the two legislators, one couple that was shot to death in Minnesota, another couple that that was attempted, but fortunately they survived. Let's try to figure out ways that our nation can avoid violence in solving political problems through violence. Let's also take a moment to recognize that we are very much a country of immigrants. Almost all of us, our ancestors came here in one another form of immigration. And let us take a moment to recognize that many, some of whom are not even recent immigrants, but look a little different, or look like some recent immigrants, are living in fear, sometimes imagined, sometimes very real. Let's try to remember that we are all humans and that we all, in some fashion, do care for each other and do want the well-being of all who are here. Thank you.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, or reorderings tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
What have you got?
From the consent agenda, I'm hoping that there might be somebody here to receive the Juneteenth proclamation.
It's already done. We got it.
So we're
Yep.
We're gonna read it?
Ms. Low is here.
Okay, good. And then I thought, out of, you know, I guess, respect for our residents, we have two other things, two resolutions that are a formality, but might deserve just a little bit of explanation of what we're doing and what the current numbers sort of are on the proposed millage rate and the proposed debt rate. I don't, we don't need to discuss it very much, but I think if we possibly had a very brief explanation, either from the city manager or the finance director, of what we're doing, just so everybody knows, I think that would be appropriate.
So you want to pull all three of those?
Correct, A, B, and C.
All right, there's a motion. Anything else from anybody?
No, but I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So they will what will they do now?
Madam Mayor, my hand is raised.
Oh, sorry. Yep, aye.
I just want to address before we continue with this conversation, the fact that we removed an item from New Business E that has been very contentious amongst a lot of residents. And I called Mr. Perry today and asked staff to please do some kind of information release that we are not the ones who removed that, that it was removed at the request of the proposer. So I just want to make sure that we're giving clarity to our residents and our business owners that that was not done because we're trying to avoid making a decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Duly noted. So anything else from anybody? No? All right, so Madam Clerk, where do we put consent? A, B, and C?
A is going to be moved to presentation, C?
Okay.
And then the two resolutions will be under New Business?
New Business, D, and E, and F?
Correct. No, D and E. Because F, the original E was removed. So it'll be New Business, I mean, E and F. I apologize. You're correct.
You're forgiven. Thank you. Okay, so that's New Business E and F. All right, great. Thank you very much. Anything else? Motion to approve the agenda as changed?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you very much. Okay, presentations. We have a presentation by our newly-elected, very active, very busy, very won't let you go for a minute if you don't want her to. Come on up. Deborah Tendrich is our new state representative. She is a local person, and as those of us that went to Tallahassee know how active she is.
Thank you so much. Hi, everyone. My name is Deborah Tendrich. I am your state representative as of November of 2024. So I'm considered a freshman in the legislature. I'm here with Joey E. Bolit. He is my legislative aide, and we also have Audrey Pejder in the district, who is there to help you. I'm a mom. I'm raising my 16-year-old, and she goes to our public schools, so it's a priority of mine. I also run a nonprofit, and so I see how policies trickle down from Tallahassee and affect people differently, so I'm able to advocate for the community in a very different way. I'm sitting on several committees in Tallahassee as well. I'm on the Joint Administrative Procedures Committee, the Select Committee on Property Taxes, which is a big deal because if we cut property taxes, we're defunding our local governments, and that means we don't have any money to pay for our public safety, our infrastructure projects, and many other critical things like public schools. So we want to make sure that we don't trip away at our local government funding and keep the home rule going so you can be responsible for your own backyard. I'm also on the State Affairs Committee, the Natural Resources and Disaster Subcommittee, the Information Technology Budget and Policy Subcommittee, the Healthcare Budget Subcommittee. I'm also on the Student Academic Success Subcommittee and the Vetoed Water Projects Committee.
Haven't overextended ourselves?
I was appointed to everything, so I'm actually excited to have been on eight committees, and I was also on two silos during budget conferencing, which at the end when we are deciding the budget, people are selected to be on different silos or called conferees, and I was on two silos for Health and Human Services and also State Affairs. I did pass my first bill. It was the to have the state of Florida recognize International Holocaust Remembrance Day, and that's extremely important right now. As a Jewish woman, I've been targeted for my faith many times, even with, people have wished death upon me and beyond. So I was very excited to pass this, especially since we're seeing more than just Holocaust denial, but even people trying to justify it. And so when you have that kind of narrative, we want to prevent hate from everyone because Jewish people weren't the only people affected by the Holocaust. Correct. I did have another bill that was extremely important, especially with the affordable housing crisis, so this was an affordable housing bill. It made it through two committees unanimously. It was blocked on the third committee, but we're bringing it back. In the meantime, I am encouraging all the cities that I visit to put language in all new development contracts that prevent mid-lease rental increases. Right now, if you don't put a piece in the contract that will say something like "The rental rates in the affordable rental housing units shall not be increased during the term of a tenant lease to adjust for the changes in rent limits occurring subsequent to execution of the tenant lease, but may be increased upon lease renewal." This will require developers to not, this will disallow developers from raising the rent mid-lease on affordable housing units. And that's an extra layer protection. When I go back to Tallahassee, I will fight for that bill again, which will be retroactive for path development, but this is something you can do to protect the residents moving forward.
How was that language? Joey?
Joey will send it over, yes. We did have some budget wins. I brought just under $2 million back into our district. One of the things that I'm extremely proud of is the Patriot Pass, which means that veterans in our county can ride public transportation for free now. And so I'm very excited about that. So that was one of my big ones. We also had Jewish Family Services. We received money from them. That would actually provide scholarships for childcare. It's extremely expensive. So this will actually provide scholarships for working families to send their kids to camp during the summer so they don't have to worry about childcare costs. One of, I know we have a lot of condos in Lake Worth Beach, so the condo crisis has been a concern for many of your constituents, residents here, and so we had a few bills that actually passed that actually helped with the condo crisis that's happening. So one is the My Safe Florida condominium program, and this actually allows for matching grants to help fund some hardening of those condos. Anything that would actually reduce the cost of the insurance, the state is actually providing matching funds. I think it's up to $175,000. I have to look, off the top of my head, I can't remember the exact amount. We also made it more transparent for clearer financial reporting rules, so everyone in the condo can be more aware of how the spending is and be more involved in this, making everything a little bit more transparent because board management is part of the problem. Unfortunately, it's a volunteer position, but we want to make sure that the people who are doing it are being transparent and including everyone in the conversation that it's benefiting or sometimes harming. You do have an ocean on one side of your city, which is we had a few bills. I threw this one in for you all because of the waterways, we have new anchoring limitations bill, which is for HB 481, which allows counties with populations over 750,000 to establish limited overnight anchoring restrictions in designated public waterways aiming to balance voter access with local safety and environmental concerns. The bill was crafted with input from voters and counties alike to avoid broad anchoring bans while addressing nuances and navigational issues in dense coastal areas.
Limits the amount of overnight anchoring?
Yes.
That's for us.
We know who's in fourth.
I believe it'll probably be the Coast Guard, but we'll see.
That's what would have been our
That's a big
Yeah, so they really kind of narrowed that down, and they actually did a lot of work on that bill. I'm not sure particularly how it affects your waterway because I don't have the ocean part of your city, but I only have from Dixie West all the way just past military, but you know, we can talk a little bit more about that if you have more questions. We also have a new one. It's Lucy's Law. It was a really sad story attached to this bill. You know, a child who was killed on the water, so it was unanimously passed to improve voter safety after a tragic 2020 accident that killed a 15-year-old girl. The legislation mandates safety education for boat rental operators, requires pre-rental instruction for renters, and increases oversight to ensure compliance. So the goal is to reduce accidents on Florida's crowded waterways and to save lives. So it's just a little more education involved in voter, right? So we have the, I already did the property tax, but we want to make sure that we don't defund local government, and the biggest concern usually I hear when I talk about property taxes is what about insurance? And so this is a priority for mine because insurance is not a controlled cost. It is, you know, increasing annually, and it's actually really, really harmful. We have a lot of individuals, I know, here in Lake Worth Beach that actually don't even have insurance because of the cost. And if we do get a natural disaster, we're looking at multiple homes that won't be able to afford to rebuild. And so we want to make sure that our residents here have access to affordable insurance, that they can sustain their homes and protect them, especially as we see year after year, our environment's getting worse. You know, our storms are getting worse, our storm shirts are getting worse, and there's tornadoes now. You know, they're getting worse, though. We see all that, so I'm definitely going to be continuing my focus on the insurance. But hopefully, we can find some reasonable reform for the property tax that might even do both. So we'll see. But my main goal with that, I'm going to do everything I can to protect the cities from defunding, from defunding the cities. I was able to co-sponsor over a dozen bills that actually passed that were extremely beneficial. One is the State Land Management Bill, which actually protects our state parks. Great bill. We have another one that actually brings the middle and high school start times back to the jurisdiction of the counties and the districts. So that's not going to be governed by the state anymore. We, you know, reversed that back. And then just a bunch of bills that actually supported health, education, public safety, and those types of initiatives, which are great. We did have a bill that I worked with, particularly Sarah Maliga and, you know, the mayor, and I talked quite a bit about it, too. It's our CRA bill. That was going to actually dismantle and sunset all the CRAs. I was able to get the bill sponsor to go onto a Zoom with three CRAs in the county. And Lake Worth Beach is one of the ones who participated in that, and Delray Beach and also Lake Clark Shores, three fabulous CRAs who do tremendous work. And so we were able to come and talk about the highlights of the CRAs and what they're actually bringing to the table. They actually adjusted the bill based on our conversation, and that bill ended up dying because they bundled it up with a few other things, and working with the Senate, we were able to kill that bill. Hopefully, it doesn't come back. But just so you know, that they're really fighting for more oversight with the CRAs, even on the good ones. But we want to make sure that you can continue to bring more affordable housing projects, increase mobility, and affordable rents to the, to the small business owners, so priority. And I did mention that I was on the Healthcare Budget Subcommittee. We have one big highlight from that, which was really interesting. And I know that Lake Worth has some fantastic nonprofits here, and there's a nonprofit run from the top, which is called Hope Florida. And Hope Florida was actually caught with a $10 million settlement from, which actually came from Medicaid. So Centene is a Medicaid insurance company. They were overpaid by the state. The state of Florida is the only state that didn't publicize that settlement. Every other state did. So they brought $57 million of that to ACHA, which was the right thing to do, and then secretly wired $10 million to Hope Florida, which is run by our First Lady and the state. And then it was funneled to two 501(c)(4)'s, then into James Uthmire's PAC, which then went to fight the Amendment Three Initiative, ballot initiative on the last election. So, you know, that is an open investigation now by Leon County. I don't want nonprofits to be affected with less trust because something bad happened with one nonprofit. So don't let that affect your trust in our local grassroots organizations that do the work that the government can't. So there was that, but follow that story because it's an active investigation right now. And one thing did pass because I know Lake Worth Beach is huge on petitions. So I'm sure there's a few people here who, you know, help pass out and get people to sign petitions. It's in this room. I, yes. They actually pretty much made it virtually impossible for a citizen-led ballot initiative to happen, and that means that, you know, we fought extremely hard and tirelessly to prevent that bill from happening, from actually coming to fruition. It was a priority, and no matter what, we weren't able to stop it. That actually had so many people from the community come in and take, wait their turn to speak and fight against that, which does affect our free speech. It costs a $1 million bond now to get petitions signed, and some people are at risk of even third-degree felonies if they collect over 25 petitions. So, I mean, it's a very extreme bill that is really pushing people out of even wanting to, you know, try that process again. So hopefully, we'll be able to create some reform and get that reversed in the future. Other than that, we finalized the budget last night. I drove in today just so I can make it here. Yeah, so right before here, I went to and did a legislative update and briefing with Environmental Caucus, and I rushed here right in the nick of time because I want to make sure that I show up for everyone. My office is extremely willing to be a part of the community. We want to, so please let us know how we can show up for you, not just for you to show up for me, and we want to be there. Anything regarding state agencies? So if there's any Medicaid unemployment, any issues with, anything with state agencies, we have a direct access to those agencies, so you can refer people to us for us to be a partner and prevent, and helping navigate those systems. And I also want to let everyone know, Joey has this flyer, but this is our legislative update in virtual town hall that we're doing on the 24th. This is open from 6:00 to 7:30. We will stay longer if there's questions. So, you know, anything that you want, if you want to know, bring those questions or reach out to our office. But thank you to the City of Lake Worth Beach, everyone who shows up today, and, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to share the legislative update today.
Thank you for being so hardworking. I'm exhausted. Listen. I feel we have a couple of questions. So Mimi first, Ms. May?
Hi. Thank you for coming and sharing with us. I know, I can't believe how much you've done.
Thank you.
As a new
No surprise, but
No, it's no surprise. We know how tenacious you were when you were running, and you haven't stopped, which is awesome. Such an inspiration.
Thank you.
I have two questions. The first one was regarding the property tax. And I remember when we went to Tallahassee, they were talking about one of the best-case scenarios, and one of the things that we could support was a study to find out what would happen if we took away the property tax. Did that study pass? Is that going to happen, or did the whole thing get shot?
Well, right now, I'm just on the committee, so they're looking at bringing bills forward in January, possibly. That would address property tax.
So they're not going to do the study?
Did they, I don't think that bill was actually heard.
Didn't want that was an idea. It's in the new budget, but the governor hasn't signed off on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I can check, I can check back on that one.
Yeah.
I wrote down public for my next question. I have no idea what I meant, so if I think of it, I will, I will ask you that. Oh, I know what it was. For your town hall, we have a utility meeting then, so we can't go, but is that open to the public?
Absolutely.
Okay, so can we share that on our
Yeah, we can email it to you.
Okay, that would be soon. Actually, I think you did. I think we have it. If I give it to our PIO, we can send it out?
Absolutely, and, you know, the goal is to make sure that more people, one, know what a state rep is, two, when they can reach out to us for help, and then, three, know that we're here in your own backyard, that we're a resource. And I think that people just feel disconnected with our office, so I'm trying to change that dynamic. So the more people who know, the better. Okay.
Well, we're trying to do here with our commission, too, so we have a joint purpose there.
We can work together on that.
Okay, Ms. Maligan, hands up, but Mr. McVoy was up first.
Hi, and thank you also for all the work that you've been doing up there. I assume that sleep is not really part of the plan when something happens. So thank you for that. Just a question. You mentioned that in the same breath as property taxes, people are concerned about insurance. One of the things that I heard at one of the workshops, I think Jared Moskowitz was participating, a couple others that had held at the TPA in West Palm a while back. The insurance companies pushed back a little bit and said, well, our costs are going up. And obviously, one of the pieces that those costs are going up is due to climate change, which, so my question is, do you hear any talk of trying to get at the root, one of the root causes of property taxes, I mean, insurance increases? Obviously, anything we do about climate change isn't going to immediately turn it around, but anything we don't do is only going to make it worse. Do you hear any, is anybody willing to talk climate change at all up there?
That word is not allowed in Florida anymore. But I will say personally, you know, and this is actually quite interesting because I go into one neighborhood and it instantly feels 10 degrees colder because they have tree canopies surrounding that community. You know, I'd love to see neighborhoods, you know, actually plant more trees to be able to create that, that shade and insulation from the sun. So that would actually save on electric bills and, you know, and all those costs. But as far as the insurance is concerned, it's a bigger conversation. You know, we're looking at, right now, our governor has actually, a few years ago, given the insurance company several billion dollars without any strings attached, and that was when they were pulling out. And then we gave them another $350 million tax break, and I don't know about you, but I didn't feel any of those discounts trickle down. I think we need to really evaluate how we are actually providing these benefits, whether they should go straight directly to the consumer and our constituents, or should they go to the businesses? And what oversight is there to make sure that actually, if they do give it to the companies, what oversight is there to make sure that it actually does trickle down to each and every one of us? So I think a big part of it is how things have already been done and kind of the precedent we've kind of set towards how we interact and engage with those policies and companies as well. I think that with what you're saying is actually 100% correct. I mean, we have a lot of crises here now that are getting worse every year. And, you know, with that being said, we have a lot of work to do. As far as your, have we heard conversations about that? Not particularly. One of the things that I would like to see in the process is do things that have multipurpose. You know, how can we actually reduce other expenses while also lowering the cost of insurance? My Safe Florida program does one of those things, which does provide funding to harden the homes and the condos right now. So we have My Safe Condo, My Safe Home, which is providing funding up to $10,000 for homes if, you know, you need new windows or doors, which actually does reduce the cost of your insurance as well. So they are, we do have some programs. I like to see more funding in them, so more people can actually utilize those programs. But as far as there's other, other creative ideas that we can work on to bring forward to make sure that we can kind of like hit a few different facets, the climate concern, and also the insurance crisis combined.
Ms. Maligan, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to Representative Tendrich for everything that she did in her first freshman year up in Tallahassee. We have only a glimpse of the hard work and dedication that it takes to get things done up there. And I want to say thank you, Representative Tendrich, for not only helping us combat the CRA bill, but arranging for that open Zoom conversation with the bill sponsor to educate on the importance and the impact of the CRA and to make sure that those who are making the decisions in Tallahassee realize that not everyone is a bad apple and that a lot of the CRAs do, do the work they're supposed to do. And so I just, I personally want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you did in arranging that Zoom, and I'm thankful that we were able to overcome that CRA bill.
Thank you. Mr. Sagrich?
Hi, first wanted to say thank you, like everybody else. And then just to touch upon the insurance side of things, one of the things that was taken away from consumers was the right to sue and recover attorney's fees, which basically rendered the insurance companies invulnerable to lawsuits because it would cost you more to sue than you were actually entitled to in damages. So as you look at stuff, hopefully, you guys can look at that. That might be a minor win. It might not resolve the cost of insurance, but at least when people are paying $10,000 a year for their insurance, and something tragic does happen, they've got a shot of actually getting paid out on their policies. And right now, they're, you know, besides doing, you know, some of the other dispute resolution processes, like appraisal, they really don't have another choice. And so the insurance companies in the last couple of storms have really taken advantage of that and just flat-out refused to pay. So that might be one minor win if we can't get some of the others.
Yeah, so there was actually a bill that was addressing that. It didn't make it through the finish line, but was it 973?
Omar Blanco's bill?
Pop quiz, Jim.
No. It was the, it had an insurance reform on it.
I know that a lot of people were against it, the same people that fought so hard to get that tort reform bill passed. So we did have something. It actually went, came pretty close, and I think it might have even died on the House floor. I have to look into it. But I feel like that one got so much support, something like that will be back. And there's a few people that, you know, focus on like insurance issues that run those types of bills, and they're a lot more fluent in that than I am. I'm more focused on education, affordable housing, those types of things, so.
Some of us are in the legislative committees for the Florida League of Cities, and I'm on the one zoning, land use, and that sort of thing. And there's also a finance committee, so we start meeting in October to get our priorities straight. We just pick a couple of things to go for, so it's not everything. So it's going to be interesting to see where the CRA lands in priorities this year, either the Finance Committee for the Legislature or the land use.
And I would also love to just ask if we could potentially even look at that Affordable Housing Bill. That would help a lot of people to make that. Yes, I will.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much to everyone. Thank you.
We all over deck. Thank you, someone. Public service is not easy, and it's not as glamorous as you think it might be. She's pretty glamorous. She's a little more glamorous. And our feelings don't get hurt if you leave after you have your thing. For everybody to know that, if you do your thing and go home, it's okay. We don't get our feelings hurt. Okay, so now we have a proclamation declaring June 27th, 2025 is national HIV testing day. In the United States, more than 1 million people are living with HIV, and every 15 minutes, a new HIV transmission occurs, resulting in more than 30,000 annual new HIV diagnoses. And whereas, in Florida, more than 128,000 people are living with HIV, and an estimated 10 new transmissions occur daily. One in seven persons with HIV don't know they have it. In Palm Beach County, more than 8,800 people In Palm Beach County, more than eight, eight thousand eight hundred people, or one in a hundred and seventy five residents are living with HIV. And whereas, the NHTD theme for twenty twenty five is level up your self-love and check your status, is promotes HIV testing and encourages individuals to know their status. And whereas, significant new and highly advanced treatments deliver hope and enhance the quality of life for those who are affected, these considerable advancements can only help individuals if they know they have HIV, if they know their status and are linked into lifesaving medical care. And each year, on June twenty seventh, we observe National HIV Testing Day to raise awareness about the importance of HIV testing and early diagnosis of HIV and linkage to medical care. And to inspire the nation to achieve the shared vision of zero new HIV cases, infections, zero discrimination, and zero AIDS-related deaths. And whereas, the ninety-five, ninety-five, ninety-five ambitious goal plan to help end the AIDS epidemic has set its targets for twenty thirty, that ninety-five percent of all persons with HIV will know their status, ninety-five percent of all people diagnosed with HIV will receive sustained ART, and ninety-five percent of all people receiving ART will have viral suppression. And whereas, this year marks the thirty-first annual observance of National HIV Testing Day on June twenty seventh. And the Palm Beach County HIV Community Prevention Partnership and the Palm Beach County HIV Care Council through its partners are working together to provide HIV testing throughout Palm Beach County during the weeks surrounding National HIV Testing Day, June twenty-third to the twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-five. Now therefore, I Betty Rush, Mayor of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the commission, do hereby proclaim June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five as National HIV Testing Day. And urge all residents of the City of Lake Worth Beach to take the HIV test to know your status and participate in other activities and observances designed to increase awareness and understanding and promote prevention initiatives to end the HIV epidemic. Whereas I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida to be fixed to seventeenth day of June twenty twenty-five. And I believe we have some folks here to receive this. Come on up. Representative Tendrich. Is she sitting? Yeah, yeah, she's, come on. For AIDS or for children. Okay, we're gonna do two pictures. The first picture is gonna be with our legislator and us, and then the second one is gonna be HIV. So. Proceed importantly.
Since you advocate for nonprofits, will you stay for our photo as well? Thank you.
Always. Oh, I'm talking. Sure, thank you. Um, so thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Commission. Thank you for everyone who was here this evening. My name is Dylan Brooks. My pronouns are he, him, and his, and I'm the Director of HIV Prevention and Education at Compass, your local LGBTQ plus community center. I'm joined today by Pedro Tivener, who is our linkage specialist, and Julie is right here, who is our Executive Director. Um, I just wanted to thank y'all for the proclamation. As always, this is actually our fifth year partnering with Walgreens. So we'll be in a Walgreens location, specifically thirty-one eighty-four South Congress Avenue in Palm Springs on Friday, June twenty-seventh, doing free rapid HIV testing. And we also do free rapid HIV testing at Compass, six days a week, which is located at two oh one North Dixie Highway, Lake Worth Beach, Florida, three, three, four, six, oh. Um, and on this upcoming Saturday, June twenty-first, our Young Adult Program is actually hosting a movie night. So come out and see a screening of The Normal Heart and get a free HIV test while you're on site. And are you gonna plug Stonewall?
Go, no.
Cool. Um, on June twenty-eighth, uh, we are going to be at the Kravitz Center for our annual Stonewall Ball. This year, the theme is redefined and reclaiming red as our color. Thank you. There's gonna be a lot of fun stuff.
Be no confetti at the Kravitz Center. They've absolutely forbidden.
So Commissioner May just asked me if someone's going in to get tested. What does confidentiality look like and all that good stuff? Um, so at Compass, we do have a beautiful little lobby, so you'll just sit out in the lobby and one of our testing volunteers will come and get you. It's a simple little finger stick, kind of like getting your blood sugar checked, results ready in fifteen minutes. Um, in terms of the confidentiality of it, like, the only person who knows why you're there is gonna be you and the tester that you're with. So does that kind of make sense?
Ready in case like it's positive and you freak out?
Absolutely. So all of our testers have gone through the Florida Department of Health HIV and AIDS five hundred, five oh one, and have had extensive training, regardless if the person comes back negative. So then we'll get them linked up to pre-exposure prophylaxis to maintain a negative status. Or if they test reactive, we'll do blood draw right then, right there. Uh, results in twenty-four, forty-eight hours, linkage to care within seventy-two business hours of diagnosis.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I remember when way back eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty, ninety-seven, an HIV diagnosis was a death penalty. And it's so different. People do still think that. It really, I mean, I have friends living on the AZ, whatever drugs you're giving now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. ART.
Showing what, but it took too long, you know, to get there, but we're there now, and thank you for doing the work that you do.
Absolutely. I, I want to give a shout out to my team at Compass. It's really them.
Love them.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you very much. One more. One more proclamation for the city. Whereas, Juneteenth is also known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Liberation Day, and Emancipation Day, is a holiday celebrating the emancipation of those who have been enslaved in the United States. And whereas, on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, General Gordon Granger announced that slaves in Texas were freed by the order of the President of the United States. The announcement came two and a half years after President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation, which had become official January first, eighteen sixty-three. And whereas, freedmen in Texas organized the first of what became the annual celebration of Jubilee Day on June nineteenth. And whereas, June nineteenth has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and nineteenth, and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over a hundred and fifty years. And whereas, the City of Lake Worth Beach encourages everyone to observe Juneteenth as an opportunity to reflect, rejoice, and plan for a brighter future as we continue to address racial injustices in our society today. So now therefore, I Betty Rush, Mayor of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five as Juneteenth in the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, and urge everyone to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our own city, which as some of us know, was founded by African-American people. Ladies, in witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Lake Worth Beach to be fixed the seventeenth day of June twenty twenty-three. And I do believe we have some members of our community get this. Come on up. Yeah, it took two years for these folks to be enslaved, still enslaved after the uh, after the thing is done. Their internet is down. Ms. Low, would you like to say something? Somebody like to say another president? Oh. Both of them, both of my phone.
Yes.
Both of my phone. You have to, choose a topic. That's what maybe should do.
Um, good evening, Commissioner May. I hope you are able to come to Juneteenth with us on Thursday. Park Avenue. Thursday. Maschidi was home.
So there's be, speaker at twelve. Oh, I'm gonna be out of town. I am so sorry. I don't. I won't save that for me. Give me a to-go cup. Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any luck over here?
All righty. Public participation of non-agenda items and consent agenda. Okay, we only have two tonight. Shocking. Uh, Julie Seaver followed by Peggy Fisher.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Julie Seaver. I reside at nine thirty North Federal Highway, but I spend more time at Compass Community Center. Um, I'm here tonight as an advocate for public safety at all of our community celebrations, and more specifically as the organizer for Palm Beach Pride. I would like to give a special thank you to Mr. Jamie Brown and Tiana and the entire team for working with us, not just this past year um, at Palm Beach Pride, but in all of the years that we've been hosting Palm Beach Pride and the parade here. Um, it takes a lot of planning and a lot of communications, and we had some last-minute challenges that we were able to procure. And one of the things that um, I'm here tonight is to propose um, including the budget for Palm Beach Pride twenty twenty-six and the city's contracted events with the Palm Beach Sheriff's Office to make sure that we ensure the same level of safety and security measures that have kept us all safe and free from any incidents um, in the past. This past year and in years past, Compass staff has always worked well with Mr. Brown and, and the Leisure Services Team, um, as well as District fourteen Palm Beach Sheriff's Office, to ensure a strong law enforcement presence and that both the parade and the festival are properly staffed. Um, the reason why this matters is because just this past weekend, a man was arrested with a loaded gun and extra nine-millimeter magazines at the Stonewall Pride event this past Saturday in Wilton Manners. Um, from what I understand, the uh, person lives in Loxahatchee. Thanks to the enhanced security measures of medical detectors, metal detectors, train staff, and visible police presence, a potential tragedy was avoided. That was only possible because the event had invested heavily in safety measures as well as um, the city's investment in keeping all of its residents safe. Palm Beach Pride is the largest LGBT plus event in Palm Beach County. It brings together thousands of residents, families, and visitors. And in today's climate, um, we cannot assume safety. We must plan for it. So I am looking forward to working with the entire Leisure Services Department to include the twenty twenty-six Palm Beach Pride and Parade in the event plan contract with PBSO, as well as request a security review post-event report to inform um, planning for future years. We look forward to working with the City of Lake Worth Beach and its top-tier leisure services team for Palm Beach Pride and all of our city events. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Seaver. It's such a great event. Peggy Fisher.
Peggy Fisher, five oh eight North A Street. At the last meeting, it was mentioned that the tree by Dave's Last Resort was going to be replaced with a Japanese blueberry. Um, and I don't know that that is the right choice. And looking at the pros and cons, the one big con that keeps coming up on anything I read is the berries. And they fall, and it says, keep the trees twenty-five feet away from walkways. Well, you're putting one right next to a walkway. Um, and they also can attract, if they're smush, fruit, fruit flies. So I would just caution about that. I think maybe there's a better option than something that drops blueberries on the ground that gets smashed when people walk up and down the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Um, that's not my only thing. My second.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. My second item relates to something at the casino building, but not the item that is on the agenda. Um, the vacant space on the north end of the second floor. That's been vacant since the building was rebuilt. It really wasn't renovated, but rebuilt. And looking at the rents that were paid by the restaurant beneath that space over that timeframe, the city has lost over three million dollars minimum. Now, that's a lot of money when we keep saying we don't have funds. And it, it was discussed how we need to move people out of there. We've used it for storage. We've got the lifeguards up there. We've got building maintenance up there. And you all approved purchasing modular buildings to house those staff members. That was some time ago. And they're nowhere in sight. And it would be nice to get some update so, and on the buildings. And also, if we're gonna look later tonight at another part of the second floor, it is equally important to look at the space on the north end of the floor that could be rented. And it's a shame that for all these years, um, it has not been utilized to produce income for the residents of the city.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's the end of public um, participation on agenda items. Uh, consent agenda. Do I have a motion for consent agenda A? Uh, item A is the only one left. No, it's not even there. Wait a minute. It's D, D.
Motion to approve.
Wait a second?
Second.
Um, we didn't do the minute.
Oops, yes.
All right. Who's gonna approve the minutes? Motion to approve the minutes.
Well, you can't do that, but motion to approve the minutes.
I, I have.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Um, for June third meeting under unfinished business, item A, number three. Shayla, it just doesn't have any, there's nothing finished. It says voice vote showed ayes, Mayor Rush, Vice Mayor Maliga, and Commissioner McBoy, nays, none. And then it says Commissioner May and Segrich. There's nothing that goes with it. So if we can just finalize what that actual vote was.
I will make the correction, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that change, all, all in favor of, of who seconded the motion?
No one yet.
Someone second the motion, please?
Second was Commissioner.
Second was Commissioner uh with Vice Mayor Malaga's suggested changes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now consent agenda, motion for uh item D.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Public hearings, resolution thirty-two dash twenty twenty-five abandoning an approximately ten foot wide alley right of way located five oh seven South Dixie Highway, Lake Worth Beach. Good afternoon. And she's back from Long Island. Really? Yeah, really.
Or January, January would be nice.
So how do we want to handle this? There's a presentation, so we'd like our presentation. Is that staff? There it is.
I know, I would like to see the the presentation.
Yeah, of course.
All right. Thank you so much. Evening Commissioners. My name is Seth Bain. I'm a shareholder with the firm of Louis Longman and Walker. Uh, I also want to point out that I have a master's in urban planning and I'm a certified planner. And I say this because I'm gonna talk about urban forum and transportation tonight. And usually when an attorney does that, everybody rolls their eyes, but I come to these topics honestly. I'm joined today by my colleague Nick Spickler, Nick Fixler, also with LW. We have Mary Ann Wurvy, who is a member of the project lead team and our engineer Max Kaplan. Before I begin the presentation, I want to make the point that we are sensitive to the fact that the city's been having discussions about city-owned property and its deposition, the the importance of that and and being sensitive to that. And we recognize that. We realize the importance of that. But as said, we hope you'll take a look at, you know, our presentation and the facts before you today on this somewhat unique situation uh and hopefully be uh in in support of our request. Um, the item before you today is the abandonment of an alleyway to permit the unification of a property to allow the development of a business in your community. It's been the stated goal of this board to find ways to encourage investment in your community, and we think we're part of that. And as always has been mentioned, alleyways are in fact an important part of the transportation network in your community. In residential districts, they created opportunity for parking to the rear of the space, leaving your 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 communities uh aesthetically more pleasing and 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 harmonious. And in commercial districts, they're equally important, right? Because you move the loading zones and the dumpster in the back of house off of the main street, so they're not interfering with the livelihood and commercial area. However, that's not what we're dealing with today. Today, we're dealing with a remnant of a remnant alleyway that's really a liability to the city and not a benefit. So that said, I'd like to walk you through the project. Here's the block in question to orient you. This is the Walgreens that's right there at Sixth Avenue South and Dixie Highway on the northwest corner. The development that we're working on is the north end of this block. In order for this Walgreens to be developed, the south half of this alleyway had already been abandoned and the Walgreens constructed immediately over top of the property. Our project, to give you a little background on where we're at today and how we got here, which is in the back of materials, this uh property is in the mixed-use Dixie Highway District. Uh, it's a permitted use for an auto parts store and the site plan was submitted to your staff, reviewed extensively uh and then brought before the Planning and Zoning Board for approval where it was in fact approved. However, when that approval went through, there was a condition noting that there was this remnant alleyway that ran through the property and that we would have to come before you, which is why we're here today to have the city release that property. This is the site plan of what was proposed uh and and approved to the city. Uh, as you can see here, uh the access to the site is from Fifth Avenue uh south on the north side and H Street to the west. Obviously, this is the pervert access, so you're not interfering with the flow of traffic on Dixie Highway. So it's always preferred in these commercial districts that your access points are off that sec- those secondary streets and two access points to ensure smooth flow through the area. The added benefit of that is the building itself can be moved closer to South Dixie Highway, creating that stronger urban corridor and urban fabric along there also preference. And of course, we've located the the loading zones and the dumpsters centered to the property. So again, not interfering, you know, visually screened from the surrounding rights of way. In working with your team, we've certainly worked hard to address the city's design standards. And as you've seen this rendering, we work with the architectural style and detailing, providing neutral uh natural materials, neutral colors, large windows, the tiered roofing and the banding, all intended to create a non-corporate feel of something that feels like it's of a a high quality and standard, which is certainly the extent that the city and we are going for. And that architectural detailing has continued around the building again to create a a harmonious and beneficial view. So looking at that site plan now overlaid in the context of the block, you see what's occurring here. The image details request, oh, let's see, uh anyway, you see how the area lays out. In the center of the block, there is still one other area that's accessed by the alleyway, and I'll I'll walk you through that. But what is there today? This is what that alley looks like. It's an unimproved area. There's no through traffic. South end, there's some parking there. And when you're on the Walgreens side, it's completely fenced off with additional utilities there. I I will go back because one point I do want to make is you do see that the power lines run through there. And that's an important point and one that we've addressed with our application. So here is the exact layout of our request before you today. The yellow boxes are the property that is controlled by AutoZone and under control for it. The area in red is that alleyway that we're seeking to abandon. Because the Walgreen is Walgreens is there, there's no way for that alley to access as a public transportation system. There's no cul-de-sac. There's no turnaround. There's no alternative means to come out of there. So there's literally no way for that to be utilized. In Aqua is the two sites that are not currently um uh that would be the only other site that could access this alleyway. We were asked to address that, and in fact, we have. We have provided a cross-access easement to those property owners where they will be able to use the drive aisles through the development over the driveways to access that same alleyway location. They're not really using it for that today. They've got, you know, some storage back there and they've kind of like fenced it in and already kind of made it their little space. Nevertheless, if they should want to redevelop and it would be to their benefit to be able to access, have a secondary access into their site if they wanted to be able to pull through, this permanent cross-access easement agreement will be there and they could utilize that for their redevelopment so that they could get to that site.
They'd be driving, would they be driving over your grass to to?
So so how we've developed it right now is that's a, that's, we have a flush curb and we've done the stabilized grass turf there that you can drive over to secure it. If they wanted to redevelop it and wanted to be a paved surface, like they actually needed to be a a legal cross-access so that they can have patrons or whatever drive through there. Right now, it's dirt and nothing, right? So we have stabilized it. We're putting a flush curb there. We're making it accessible. And then if they wanted to come in, it would be a reasonable request to, so they want to say we want to pave that eight feet there and 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 we could let them do that.
They can get out.
Yeah, exactly. As I said, we've also addressed the utilities. There's that power line that runs right now down the ten foot, the edge of that ten foot uh alleyway that exists, recognizing that that area was that 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 power line is right on that edge. Your staff has actually asked that we expand the easement that we provide you and make it fifteen feet wide. We have no above-ground improvements. Our building does not interfere with that area. So we've agreed to make it fifteen-foot easement dedication, so it more fully captures that those power lines that are there today. They're not going to be moved. We've designed the site around that power lines that are there. And then with the additional width, if there was other utilities that needed to be to be put in there, you know, you'll have the additional space to do so. So that's the easement dedication that we have designed and graded. So that said, this is a portion of your code that addresses this today, what we're under. Um, the request we're looking is that the property that's being held is not needed by the public as a right-of-way and should be returned to private ownership. As we've seen, it simply isn't a property that can be utilized as a right-of-way by the city. However, that very same section gives this city the power to reserve easements for utilities, which is exactly what we've done and in fact expanded the ability to do that uh in the area to give you a a larger sense for that. So that's it. This is the site plan. We're excited about it. I I didn't even point out there's a paver parking area, which is both kind of aesthetically better, but also helps with our stormwater retention. So like I said, this was thoroughly vetted by your by your professional staff and approved, and we're excited for the opportunity. Happy to address any questions.
Step back a little bit. That's the only thing. We're doing um, you know, the developments we're doing on Dixie as they come up, I look at them and like even the Echo Greens, they they seem awfully close to Dixie. So that's my only, I I think there's a reason not to do this. Um, but that would be my only request.
Yeah, I mean, we'll work with staff on it. There's always that sort of debate, that push and pull of wanting a strong, you know, you know, urban feel and and push the building out. But there is, I I I'm not sure what that setback is. I think it's at least ten, it's like it's more than ten feet. Yeah. It's more than ten feet and and obviously well landscaped as well. So it's not, you know, it's not hanging over the sidewalk, as it were.
Okay, um, Mr. Um, Segrich.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, I just had a couple of questions. And I I believe I understood it right when I I read through the the backup. But if there is any cost to moving utilities around and so on, is that going to be borne by the city or by you as the developer?
Uh, I I'm not entirely sure of the answer to that. I think um, you know, if there was access required, I think moving the utilities, the act- that work itself would be upon you. I think if we had to, if you had to cut the driveway, you know, I think it would be upon us to to make those repairs to to the actual, you know, the improvements that we've made. Um, you know, it would be our responsibility to re- repair that.
But uh as your your plan is today, we're not really moving the telephone poles. We're not moving.
That that's that's correct. All the utilities there are there and and designs remain where they're at.
So it's effectively a zero dollar.
Correct.
Um, and then just by by looking at the the site plan, there's that to the south side underneath the AutoZone building, kind of a drainage swale, if if you go out there right now. So that's Walgreens property? To maintain that?
Yes.
Um, because that's one of the areas that's kind of an eyesore there right now. Um, so.
That's long.
And then could you talk a little bit about the um the um landscape design and the pergolas and and how that's going to kind of um help with the visibility from Dixie Highway into the parking lot and and so on? Because I I believe that was something that you guys had to add um to to give a better look and feel from from a.
Yeah, yeah. Part of our request is we actually requested the opportunity to have a street wall along part of the property, which was a specific request that that a auto parts store could ask for in there. Um, so we asked for the opportunity to have that um both to improve the screening of the parking lot, give the opportunity to have the landscaping there. Um, I don't, the pergola design itself, I'm not certain what prompted that, but part of the design. Yeah, yeah. Let me turn it over to my engineer who is uh more familiar with those details.
Good evening. Max Kaplan with Thomas Engineering, civil engineer for the project. The uh staff actually required us to have a ten-foot setback, no more, no less, and be for uh from for the structure around that property line. Um, and uh to address the parking lot portion, we had to ins- uh propose the pergola structure, which is setback ten feet from the property line. Basically, stat, per the code, the entire building would need to traverse the the eastern property line along Dixie Highway because a portion of that has the parking, the parking lot, parking spaces. We uh proposed the uh trellis and the pergola in order to meet that ten-foot uh required setback for a structure in that area.
Create that continuity that's.
Like it's a building, but it's not.
Correct. Instead of just having a parking lot adjacent to the right-of-way, you have a decorative structure instead of a building.
I I still think ten feet. I'm just my own person. I don't think ten feet's enough.
That's our code.
It's the code requirement.
It's a part, but you could go.
No, no.
I have to say it's.
Ten-foot base building line, ten feet, yeah.
That I don't like.
I would agree with you.
Education.
Thank you.
Yeah, really, that's, we can talk about that.
Yeah, I I would agree with you on on that, Mayor. The the other thing was just, you know, just for the public listening and 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 looking at these, because we are looking at some of these where it is a sensitive topic of the city giving up um some of these alleys and rights-of-way. This project would move forward regardless of the abandonment. We would just get a less optimal design. Is that fair to say?
Uh, yeah, I mean, absolutely. Well, the problem became that that the set, the internal setbacks become an issue. You know, the the fact that your parking is supposed to be on a unified lot. So I'm I'm not sure that the project actually would move forward. It would there would create some real code issues if the property couldn't be unified into a single lot. Um, yeah, that gap in the middle would would create some some challenges.
Uh, it's, I can't see what we're just, as in, do you have your hand up?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, why don't you go for it now?
Thank you. Um, my concern is the landscaping that's going to be along the walkway of Dixie Highway, and I would like to make sure that those are shade trees. Um, because if we're trying to be a walkable community and we know how many people use the bus system on Dixie Highway, I would really um push for shade trees, not bushes, not palm trees um to be on the the side that's facing Dixie Highway. In addition, I do not like the color. It is boring, what I call government brown. And we are an art city. I don't know, you know, who in our staff would ever recommend, you know, painting that building that's on the entranceway into our city a boring, flat tan. Um, so I would like to see something come back with a more pop of color to incorporate what Lake Worth Beach really is. Um, I understand it's, you know, it's AutoZone that's corporate, but being part of a franchise, um business owner myself, I know that there is leeway. Um, and then the other thing I'd like to have a conversation with is staff addressing the other landowner just using the alleyway without permission um and whatever they're doing over there. That's all I have today.
Thank you. Mr. McVoy.
Um, I will informally second the request for shade trees along Dixie, make them something that will eventually provide some canopy over at least the sidewalk. Wouldn't hurt if it was over the road. Um, and and I suspect probably most of the commission would be in favor of that.
Yep.
Uh, I thought it was very interesting what you mentioned on the south side, that you were consciously taking into account that well, we're not keeping the alley on that little piece of grass there, but we're gonna make the curb such that you could get through from the parking lot. And if they want to drive on the grass, that's okay. And if some point in the future, maybe they want a bit more access, we'll talk about paving it or something. Um, as somebody who finds in Florida it exasperating that you can't get there from here between businesses, I I appreciate your foresight and and thought on that. Here's where I'm gonna go with that, to extend that idea a little bit. Um, much has been made in this presentation and in previous ones that, well, look at the condition of the alleyway. It's just sand and it's kind of abandoned and whatnot. But we have a lot like that. But that doesn't say anything about what that alleyway could be in the future. We have alleys that have been in fact paved, sometimes by private residents, sometimes by the city, sometimes by who knows who. Um, and the thought mostly seems to have been access for vehicles, for cars. But I would find the, this is a long shot that goes all the way up pretty much. I don't know if it goes continuously, but it goes pretty close to Lake and Lucerne, our downtown. I would ask you to consider, is there any way similar to what you're thinking about with the access on the bottom that you could keep it accessible for either walkers or bikers? If that could be done in a way that didn't really interfere that much with the rest of your activities. I suspect it wouldn't get used for that all that often. But I think it would open up an additional transportation possibly. As a biker myself, biking along Dixie Highway, yeah, it's no fun. Um, being able to do that through an alley is something that has been brought up numerous times, at least in the bike community and sometimes in some of our mobility discussions. So if you could see your way to some sort of I don't know whether it would be an easement or simply that that, you know, some light kind of like you keep those orange lines on there in some very low-key way. It might be some edging or something or other. Again, I suspect there wouldn't be enough traffic most of the time on it. You probably wouldn't notice.
Right, right.
So that that would be my request along with the.
Yeah, and yeah, and unlike the Walgreens, we have no above-ground structures, right? Our building doesn't run through the middle of the alley. You know, the power lines are going to remain there. So the ability for people to traverse through the site will will largely be unimpeded, so.
Thank you, Mr. Segrich.
So like for our city attorney, um, you know, I, we're being asked to to do the abandonment and it sounds like from the dais, we have some asks or some recommendations. If we just go ahead and do the abandonment, there's no longer the ability to get those. Are we able to approve the abandonment with conditions? Or would we have to ensure that those conditions are met and then come back and approve the abandonment at a later date?
All unusual to those kind of conditions. Had site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. But I think the site plan that we're seeing has already been approved.
So I I mean, the the biggest I'm seeing that as far as the shade trees, the extent that that's permissible under code and there's an opportunity to do that, we will, you know, I I I think there's a little mixed species currently along that uh right-of-way, but if there's an opportunity to to upgrade those to shade trees, we'll we'll certainly entertain that.
I guess one of, you know, the the, one of the unusual things is we have an approved site plan before we approve the banning the land. And so one might say, we did the chicken before the egg here and approved something without talking to the commission. Um, so, you know, if if some of these asks are, we're we're serious about, then we might have to bring this back after the site plan is updated.
Yes. So. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I see William Waters is now in the room. Do you mind uh kind of going through the process, plan review process? And when um an item is approved and when it comes before the commission, um, just so everyone understands the sequence of events.
Leave me William Waters, Community Sanability Director. When the code was rewritten in two thousand thirteen, there was final approval granted to both the Historic Resource Preservation Board and Planning and Zoning Board for certain levels of site plan approvals. Abandements were talked about, and in that time, we have abandoned rights of way for TD Bank, Starbucks, Madison Terrace, Deco Green, the Bohemian, the Mid, uh Gulf Stream, uh the Lucente Town Homes and several other projects. By the approval of that code in two thousand thirteen, the abandonment process is rather perfunctory. It's yours giving a stamp of approval essentially to what has already been approved by the appropriate advisory board, uh, either the Planning and Zoning Board or the Historic Resource Preservation Board. You have final site plan approval when it comes to a plan development. Um, and plan developments have been Deco Green, the Bohemian, the Mid, Avery, uh, Lake Worth, uh Village of Lake Worth, Village of Lake Osborne, uh Madison Terrace, uh Lake Cove, the Gulf, the um, the Gulf Stream Hotel. And in those cases, as part of that um, plan development approval, uh, those abandements were approved as part of that process. And so staff has gone with uh the site plan review uh process that was laid out that every city department uh is provided an opportunity to review the site plan before it ever gets to an advisory board. They can raise their concerns or thoughts or opportunities for what may lie ahead in terms of uh that alley or other entity being abandoned. And I did forget to, um, um, and then it goes on to the advisory board with recommendations of conditions such as the easement for utilities. Uh, in this case, the alley was proposed to be widened by five feet since it's only ten feet wide. So that's essentially the process. We also abandoned a right-of-way and a part of an alley for the Lord's Place, Berkel Place Three and also another project north of there.
Station on Tenth Avenue?
Um, that did not.
Did not even.
We got an easement because we widened the alley. They provided a widened alley um throat from Tenth Avenue. But the project across the street, Lake Worth Apartments, there was an abandonment of a portion of the right-of-way for that.
That went away too, didn't it?
It's kind of gone away, but then I heard we knew that it might be coming back, but I think its entitlement um uh has actually expired, so we'll have to go back before the process.
Mr. McBoy, I know you have more of a lead.
Um, just a little bit of a follow-up to the Commissioner Segrich's question with the attorney. Could we bring back up on the slide the one that had the language in the yellow highlighting?
Uh, I was going to. What's the same thing?
Um, because I see right after the yellow highlighting at the bottom, reasonable conditions. Now, I don't know who defines reasonable, but we'll go with that. Such as, but not limited to, or other public purposes. Does that leave us some room as Commissioner Segrich has suggested?
And that's why I kind of brought back the trees, right? You know, the board here tonight is not sitting here to review the site plan and prove it. I wanted to present all the materials to you so that you had a full understanding of why we're making this ask and what we're hoping to bring to the city. Um, so some of those concerns and 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 not to set aside, you're sort of about passing through, but as I said, the site is permeable and we're not building anything over the alleyway. Um, some of those questions about the building color, well, we worked hard to comply with your existing code. Um, but the trees, you know, that's the sort of public purpose that I think that might, again, it's not really related to the alleys. So typically, I think Glenn would agree to me. When you're setting conditions on a specific request, those conditions are supposed to be tied to the nature of that request and what we were asking for. The easement for the for the alleyway, and perhaps even your permeability being be able to pass along that alleyway area in the future. Those are tied to the specific requests we have here today. The street trees not quite recall, re- part of the site plan or part of what's being reviewed today, but I think it's something that's more than reasonable for us to consider. But I would, you know, hope that those conditions would be, you know, limited to the the purview before you today, which is to make that determination of, is this a public right-of-way? Are there conditions to protect the city if we abandon it?
So no prequel, quid pro quo.
Uh, well, uh, yeah.
Two trees.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. No, we talk about these things, right? The rational nexus, you know, roughly proportional basis of condition. That's what it's supposed to be related to the to the alleyway abandonment. Yeah, yeah.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Malaga has her hand up.
Okay, I've got a lot of lights on here. Um, let Mr. I'm going, whenever Mr. Brown puts his light on.
Well, I just wanted to let the attorney finish speaking because it was important what William just said there. I want to make sure we're distinguishing what this process is and what we're following based on what happened in two thousand twelve.
First, that's good. Um, and according to William, there will be shade trees.
Major thoroughfare guidelines, which you all adopted in two thousand sixteen, I believe, require shade trees on our major thoroughfares.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll be getting shade.
We will be getting shade. Thank you. Um, Ms. Malaga, let's, Ms. Malaga?
Yes, ma'am. Um, thank you. So I my concern is, you know, I hear, well, it's the main thoroughfare, there's going to be shade trees. And I under, I know that in front of O'Reilly, there's no shade trees, there's bushes. I know that in front of Heff Jones, there's palm trees. So that really doesn't fare well with me saying, well, yeah, it's part of the major thoroughfare guidelines. I have watched building after building go up in our city on Dixie Highway and not provide any shade trees. So, you know, I understand what we're saying, that this is addressing the abandonment and we're supposed to be following that guideline, but this is also public land. And the public's land, it's our job to make sure that whoever's getting it is doing right by the public. And doing right by the public is understanding, if we do this, there are conditions that this commission wants to make sure are are part of the agreement. Not just, yeah, well, sure, we'll talk about, we'll do that because it's part of the guidelines, and then all of a sudden the building's done and we have one palm tree at the end and all bushes. So to me, this is kind of a non-negotiable. There's got to be a way for us to say, this is, this has got to be done and in writing for us to agree to this.
Thank you. Um, Ms. May, let's have Ms. May have a turn. Then we're getting way deep in this.
Like, I'd like to add that uh we are proposing six ten-foot tall trees along that the building facade along Dixie Highway. Um, it's three holly trees and three pigeon plums. That's on the approved landscape plans.
Pigeon plums grow tall and straight like Lombardi poplars, and they're not much, they're lovely trees, but they're no use for shade.
It's difficult because, again, the setback, there's only ten feet of property to work with. So you you can't have a significant, a tree with a significant spread in that area. Also, you have to be concerned about the root system as well, because we are adjacent to the uh the sidewalk along Dixie Highway. So there could be issues with the roots and causing tripping hazards. So it's it's a small space.
I'm with Commissioner Malaga. Let's make sure we specify actual shade trees, and there are ways, urban trees happen all the time. There's a way to deal with that. Um, and.
Yeah, we'll, we'll consider, we can definitely.
That would be a requirement.
Just, I just wanted to add that we did have six trees in that area. It's not just bushes, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for the clarify.
Uh, ma'am.
Good evening. Mary Ann Wervey. I'm with the Zerumba Group. I'm here on behalf of AutoZone. And uh, if it would please you, I would be happy to switch out the trees to whatever uh works that you see as a shade tree and that will live and thrive in that space. I have no problem doing that. And however you want me to commit to that, I'm happy to do it.
Thank you. We have that on video.
Okay.
Can we also, can we also have a commitment to talk about the color of the building?
Uh, we're, I mean.
It might be tougher.
Is that a, is that a corporate color? Is that a corporate required color?
I think we stepped away from the corporate colors to meet the code requirements. Usually they're bright red and yellow and a little guy, you know, I was like garish because my client's here, but um, we're we're looking for something a little more uh uh, community aesthetic.
Blame. I don't know. And again, we can't tie this.
Old beige.
Yeah, we'll, we'll tag it for you. Yes. Um, we're going to keep.
I'm going to do two things. One, I'm going to trust our our code compliance officers to take care of the issues that we're discussing regarding the trees um at this property or at any other property. And I'm going to call this question. So, um,
if there's, if there's.
Oh, we have public comment.
Yeah, but I think we need to, we need to move, we haven't made a motion.
We don't have a motion in a second, so let's get a motion in a second so we can.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve Resolution Number thirty-two twenty-two-five, abandoning an approximately ten-foot-wide alley right-of-way located at five zero seven South Dixie Highway.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
All right, we will, sorry, Mr. Segrich beat you to it. Um, okay, so now we have public comment. And first up is Anthony Zeiglin and Peggy Fisher. Madam Clerk, do you have any um public comments on this issue?
I have one, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Zeiglin?
Anthony Zeiglin, one-one-seven Eighteenth Avenue South. Um, I'm sure you guys all know that I was opposed to the uh proposed abandonment of the Pocket Park between twelfth and thirteenth. Um, but looking at this, I approve this. I personally think that this is actually a great idea. Um, I think that when it comes to things like this, context means everything. Um, the fact that they obviously have shown up prepared with a, you know, presentation, it's going to ultimately benefit the public good, uh, obviously them as well. Um, as a, I love AutoZone, by the way. I use it all the time. Um, the, yeah, one thing, one thing I can say is that uh the parking situation can get a little hairy, not because it's poorly designed, but because it gets so busy. And a lot of people, you know, they'll do if it's uh like windshield wiper replacement, they'll do it right there in the parking lot. So it gets busy. I get that. Um, so being able to um, you know, incorporate that alley into the over, the overall uh property design and actually, you know, with the paved area over there, I think it's a great idea. So I I personally support it. Um, but, you know, context means everything. Um, and that's all.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Ms. Fisher?
Peggy Fisher, five oh eight North A Street. I also think this needs to be approved. And I think saying, well, if you do what I want, then you get my vote. Um, it's not the really right approach. You're being asked about the abandonment. You're not being asked about the landscape plan or anything else. In reality, the building color, anything else, that's already gone through all the appropriate approvals, as you heard from Mr. Waters. So I, you know, once again, don't make it difficult for businesses who want to come into our city and improve a lot that is nothing but dirt. Improve an alleyway which deads in to a Walgreens. And before it gets there, it's got a bunch of used cars sitting there. You know, let's our thinking caps on and be a little bit more reasonable uh about things. And if you don't like the fact that the, there's a palm tree in front of this one, or there's bushes in front of another, this item is not what that building, those two buildings are about. That, that complaint needs to go to staff for them to address. Your ability is to basically say yea or nay on the alleyway. And it these people have done a great job of putting some need together to bring it to our city. And they've been here multiple times because it's been difficult. So I encourage you to approve this. Thank you.
Okay, let's. Did Ms. May, did you call the question?
I did.
Okay. What?
But it's a public comment online.
Oh, one more public comment from this. Thank you.
The public comment is from Sam Smith, one oh nine North Palm Way. I am against this proposal to abandon publicly-owned property to benefit a for-profit large corporation. My first objection is that the city should never be giving away property that is owned by the public. Sell it, perhaps give it away without renew- re- remuneration. Absolutely no. Change the ordinance so that when these issues come up, the city can sell this type of land if appropriate, but stop giving it away. Of course, the land is not buildable, but that does not mean it does not have value. If this giant corporation wants it for their project, clearly there is a huge value to this public land, and we should be getting top dollar. My second objection is that the residential parcels that abut the alleyway use the alleyway. That is clear based on the photos provided. These parcels use it to access parking in the rear of the respective properties. This proposal will push parking back onto the streets, a problem discussed multiple times before this commission. No public land should be given away. This is a terrible fiscal proposal.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nate?
Nate?
Aye.
Ms. Malaga?
She said aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Good luck and make, do a good job and say hi to the different derpers for me.
Will do.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience with us.
Highland peace.
Where it's nice and cool.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we're on unfinished business. A, options regarding the casino ballroom operations. Mr. Brown, do you want to take this lead on this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was actually going to toss it over to our leisure services director.
Hello.
Okay, good.
I'm Tiana McK, Director of Leisure Services. This for this is for the casino. Thank you. So hello.
So we've presented a few options um for you to review for the casino ballroom, which is uh to put out a new request for proposals or to direct staff to uh manage the ballroom or for holding out the casino ballroom for commercial lease, providing an opportunity for a business to operate the space.
Are there any questions?
That was true. I think we have a lot of discussion. This, Ms. May's up first, then Mr. McBoy. Um, I just have a question that um a resident had asked me to ask you. So, and it kind of goes along with what Ms. Fisher was saying. Are we just talking about the ballroom space, like that we have meetings in, or is there other, is there like an another area, like where people would prepare food? What what exactly are you talking about? And and the area that she talked about, the north spot, are we leasing that out as well? Is it the entire second floor? Can you just be a little bit more specific on that?
We are just specifically speaking about the ballroom, and there's a small catering kitchen that goes with the ballroom. The other space is the part of the RFQ, I believe.
So the ballroom and the catering kitchen that goes along with it?
Yes.
So.
Which?
Oops. Oh, thank you.
I personally, I think we should just do the whole thing as a package. I think we've got this empty, sad, empty room with the best sunsets and sunrises in Palm Beach County. And I hate to say it's been announced, but it's two thousand thirteen, it's been empty. So that's my two cents on that one. But um I see other lights around. Mr. McBoy, go first, then Mr. Segrich. And I'm sure Ms. Malaga has a hand up. There's feedback. Mr. McBoy?
Um, yes, this is something that I feel pretty strongly about having come in at the tail ends of the renovation, rebuilding of the casino building. I remember, and maybe the mayor does too, the former building and that there was a ballroom in approximately that location and probably of moderately similar size, not as nice. But um, it was very much used. Uh, I remember talking to residents, usually older residents, who said our high school graduation was held there, or people locally were married there, or they went to community dances there, or senior dances there, or um Scandinavian dances, whatever. Um, and at the time that we were working on this building, I think um, Mr. Waters may remember that I asked him during that process when we were still building, can you get me a sprung wood floor for the ballroom? Because that's the best for dancing, because it's easy on your feet and your legs. Um, and I had always envisioned that the city would preserve that idea like a library, like certain other amenities that we have in our community. This was the one public part of that building, the one part that was for community activities. Everything else was leased for commercial activities. The intent was to lease the north end uh that just came up. The intent was to lease the north end uh that just came up for discussion as perhaps a quite nice restaurant, enjoying exactly those sunrises and sunsets. Um, but that the community, that the ballroom would remain a community area. I still believe that there is a real need, maybe even more so in our community, because we are a very diverse community. We've got all sorts of different groups that have different histories in the city, all sorts of different things, different cultural ideas. The idea of bringing people together intentionally in our community, I think is a very important goal. And I think many of us would agree that the location right on the ocean is a special location. That's why we rented it out for weddings and probably had a pretty easy time getting people to, to rent it. It has a special place in both the history and the geography of our city. And I would be very reluctant um and think it was not really fair to our residents who financially supported this building to take away the one last public space. So I would be uh in favor of only the option two that says let's keep it locally managed um for the purposes consciously. And I, I'd almost encourage us to either ha- make or find, um, I think uh this is the, the city manager mentioned that he looked to see if we had anything on record somewhere. Maybe we do, but it's some obscure corner. Uh, a, a, a statement that this is a public space to be and to be encouraged that it be used for public events. So um that's my thinking on it. I hope that there would be some degree of, of support for that on the commission. Um, I know that we talk about the need for money, we talk about the need to monetize different parts of our amenities. I would ask people to think about our library or a community pool. Is, is the intent of everything that the city owns for it to be a money-making thing? Obviously, you know, if you can recoup some revenue, that's wonderful. But let's not lose sight of the importance of government providing public gathering spaces. There aren't that many of them in the city. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Segwitsch, and then Ms. Malaga.
Are we going to listen to public comment first? I thought we decided last time we could listen to public.
I don't have any cards here. And we don't have, it's a discussion, so we're not.
Hey, Madam Mayor.
Yeah?
Uh, real quick, before we get into the public comment, I just wanted to um preface this with, you know, this was out once before and the person that was selected, um, we went back and forth quite a while trying to come to an agreement, which we ultimately didn't come back to. So when we were about to put this out again, um, that's when you guys had asked for this discussion to come forward before we put this out again, because there has been interest um from multiple other entities um expressed. So we, that's why we wanted to have this conversation before we, we put this out again. And, and that was for an event company to come and kind of take over events in this space. That's what the actual solicitation was for.
Thank you. Um, okay, great. Uh, so uh we, this is a discussion, so there's no motion to, to trigger. But we'll call for public comment. First up is Jackson Stahl, followed by Pam Trillo-Clehan, followed by Peggy Fisher. And I know, I'm sure that I see hands up, and we'll get to that, uh, Ms. Malaga, after we get the public comment. Do we have any public comment on the clerks, from the clerk's office?
I have two, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so Jackson Stahl, want to come up? Calling once, calling twice. Um, Pam Trillo-Clehan, followed by Peggy Fisher.
Pam Trillo-Clehan, four-ten North Ocean Breeze.
Talk to you.
Uh, Pam Trillo-Clehan, four-ten North Ocean Breeze. Um, the question you have to ask yourself is how many businesses do you want to be in? And that's the conversation that we had as the commission back then. Commissioner McBoy, you were there then as well. How many business can you successfully run um as people that are not in the business of running weddings? And it has its challenges. Our staff has done an amazing job over the years. But it's added people, added expenses, added insurance, added staff. You know, you're already operating it, uh, double the budget that I had and you, you know, and, and you're still having financial problems, you know, saying that you don't have the money to do things. Looking at these types of, of, of projects is a perfect chance for a professional to come in and do something about it. Um, a lot of people forget history, so I want to remind you that that second space up next to the ballroom, um, when we were there before, there was leakage problems and the floors were actually leaking water. It was coming in through the ballroom. We had to do repairs to the ballroom floors. And we had to do repairs all in that second building. And because it was not able to be occupied by a business, and it took, I don't know, three or four years that we were in litigation, that we actually had to go up there and they would provide samples of things to show us, is this going to work? And we were like, right, Jamie, no, it's not going to. Then they'd bring in an engineer and come up with something else, and we were actually standing on the tiles and, and testing it out. I don't know if that's been reconciled, if it's been rectified or not. Is that why it's not, or is it because the staff doesn't have any place to run a wedding and, and have an office and do all those things, so they're utilizing that building too? So you have a lot of bigger questions, and I would, I would suggest you keep it in with the whole plan as opposed to separate out just the ballroom. Thank you.
Peggy Fisher?
Peggy Fisher, five oh eight North A Street. I don't know if this is what Mr. Brown was trying to find, but I have the press release from December first, twenty-twelve, uh, which was put out by Terry Neal, who was hired as the sales, marketing and event manager of the facility. And it says that the highly anticipated three-hundred-square-foot oceanfront ballroom will officially open in March, but is ready to start taking reservations for wedding, bar mitzvahs, bat mitzvases, concerts, exhibition, receptions and banquets, seminars and meetings. This facility is equipped with staging, chairs, tables and a full kitchen, says full kitchen. It can accommodate two hundred and eighty seated for dinner and four hundred theater-style. So that's what the city put out about what that ballroom was about. And they hired someone who had twenty years of experience um to be the sales, marketing and event manager. And they also said they hired a facility supervisor to take care of all the tenants. And so it sort of says that from the beginning, they viewed it as being operated by staff. Um, so I just thought I would share with you all that that was the stated purpose of this ballroom. Uh, they talk about weddings. Um, and so I think it's not a free space for anybody. It's a space for us to have meetings, whatever I just mentioned, and to charge for the use of that facility. And that's what I think we should continue. And if it is either leased out with the, or have someone run it with those conditions and with the condition that the city uses it when the city needs to use it.
Thank you, that's fine.
That's what it should be.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, your, uh, commissioner, your comments, your public comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the first comment I have is from Lawrence Cosenti at One Lake Avenue. As the general ma- manager of the Gulfstream Hotel and a proud veteran of Marriott International with thirty-five years' experience, I am confident they, we are the ideal partner to take over operations of the casino ballroom at Lakewood Beach Casino. As a tribute portfolio hotel under the Marriott umbrella, we bring extensive expertise and global outreach, ensuring that this iconic space can become a vibrant, revenue-generating venue that benefits the entire community. We are proud to be a partner of the City of Lakewood Beach and are committed to working closely with the city to unlock the full potential of the ballroom. While we recognize its historical and cultural value, we also understand that the space will require significant investment to meet modern standards and align with our shared vision. Any partnership would include a collaborative approach to revitalizing the ballroom, ensuring it becomes a premier destination for events while respecting its unique character. With Marriott's global resources and the Gulfstream Hotel's dedication to excellence, we can attract a diverse array of events and activities, driving economic growth and creating lasting value for Lakewood Beach and its residents. Together, we can transform this valuable asset into a thriving hub of activity, activity and celebration. The next comment that I have is from Richard Mahler at one-seven-six-seven Fifteenth Avenue North. Good evening, commissioners. I would like to voice my strong support for Option Two, directing the city's leisure service, leisure services staff to oversee the day-to-day operations of the Lakewood Casino Ballroom. This space is far more than just a venue. It is a cornerstone of community life in Lakewood Beach. My wife and I were lucky enough to celebrate our wedding reception there. Years earlier, my elderly neighbors did the same. These shared experiences are a testament to what the ballroom truly represents, a public place where community is built through celebration. Weddings, quinceañeras, nonprofit galas and cultural events all thrive when the space is managed with consistency, care and a focus on public service. Under city management, the ballroom remains accessible, affordable and grounded in values that put people before profit. Option Two protects that legacy and ensures the ballroom continues to serve as a vibrant gathering place for generations to come. I recognize that Option Two comes with additional operational costs, costs that arguably, arguably should have been invested in leisure services years ago. But this is an investment in people, not just infrastructure. The return is measured in stronger community bonds and a deeper emotional connection between residents and their city. These aren't simply events, they are meaningful life milestones celebrated in a space that truly belongs to everyone. While I understand the city's ongoing need to generate additional revenue, leasing the ballroom should not be considered. Turning over this cherished public space risks, risks reducing it to yet another short-lived business venture, something we've seen too often with restaurant turnovers in the complex. Thank you as always for your time and for your continued dedication to preserving the cu- the spirit of community that defines Lakewood Beach. The casino ballroom is a rare and valuable public asset, one that deserves to be supported, not handed off or peddled. Rather than selling off what makes our city special, we should invest in it and allow it to flourish.
Thank you. Is that, that's, that's it right there? Okay, so if you could keep an eye on the time, Madam Clerk, I have quite a few lights on. Um, and we're going to start with Ms. Malaga, because she's been very patient out there in California.
Thank you. Um, I completely appreciate that, Madam Mayor. Um, and thank you for all the public comment. This is a hard one for me because we have to balance the finances and the needs of our city with the wants of our residents. And while this is a very cher- cherished space, and you can watch the sunrise, the sunset, and it's an epic view, um, it disheartens me that it's empty and it's not utilized. And I'm kind of in between Option One and Option Three, um, which is two different worlds, because I'd really like to know at the end of the day, on Option One, what can we possibly generate if we let somebody else, if we're paying somebody else to manage it? Are we going to be in the negative? How many opportunities are we going to have for rental? Um, I'm looking at the, the staff backup. And it just doesn't make sense to me because we don't generate forty-seven thousand dollars a year in rentals. Um, we haven't since I've been elected. And to me, if we're trying to move the city forward, and you know, we do have needs and we have, you know, how many emails do we get? When is the city going to fix A, B and C? Well, to fix A, B and C, we need income. Um, I, I also was not a big fan of bringing this forward until we had our conversation next week with Zakovich um in regarding the entire oceanfront property. Um, because I really wanted to hear their thought before we gave any direction on this particular item on the way to maximize the profit on this potential space. I would like to say, whatever we do, um, if we did do Option Three, I would want to hire a real estate agent to negotiate the lease. I would not want that to be on staff, because we have seen that backfire time and time again. Um, in addition, I would want to make sure that whoever we did hire um would give a resident discount and that that would be part of the lease negotiation, that if a resident wanted to use it, that they would receive a discount. So I, I'm in between one and three, not knowing that we would actually recoup our cost on Option One.
Thank you. Yeah, I would add to that, any conversation that we have with anybody, how this turns out, not only will we be looking for resident um rates, but we wouldn't be looking for dates that the city could use it. And I don't think that's unreasonable to have. So let's go from one to two, Mr. McBoy, real quick.
Um, I just want to clarify that the uh online comment that was made by, and I didn't a hundred percent catch the name, Richard Miller or Mahler, I, I'm not quite sure which. Uh, I do not know the persons, but um our, our two comments, what I said earlier and what he said, uh, I couldn't agree more that let's keep in mind, you know, the idea that we should use amenities that are public amenities to generate money to fix the potholes. You know, hey, how about we charge people to borrow a book from the library and, and you know, buy a pothole as you rent a book? It, it's, it's not, it's missing the point of the one space in that whole building. All the rest of it is used commercially. And I would be a hundred percent in favor, always have been, of the north space using that as very much a rented commercial space for a high-end restaurant. Um, that, we've had difficulties with usage and people needed the space and managing it in the ballroom and so on. There were some design issues with the building that, you know, are a little unfortunate, but that, that all can be dealt with, I think. So I would a hundred percent be, I, I like the idea that Vice Mayor Malaga mentioned of really this discussion should happen either as part of or after our discussion, I believe it's next week, with um, I can never pronounce it, Zakovich.
Just kidding.
Um, in that context, and I think, I, I predict, but that's just a guess, that they will say, as you think about that whole space, think about the mix of uses. There's a lot of commercial, there is very little community space up there.
Thank you very much. Uh, we're going to go to three. Ms. May?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm kind of glad I went third, because a lot of the things that, that were said, and I'm not going to say them again, but I agree with the spirit of the, of the statements by Commissioner McBoy and by um the resident, Richard Mahler. But I don't think that Option One precludes those things from happening. So I think we can still do all of the things that um can have weddings, have bar mitzvahs, have community events. And I think as long as, when we do the um issue the RFQ, we just put in the RFQ that the city has specific dates that we want to use it. There is a resident discount or res- even resident preference. If two people apply for the same date, residents get the preference for that date. You know, because it is, it is a city-owned space and the residents are the owners of the city. I don't want to put this back on leisure services. Um, I know that um I know, I, I, I don't doubt that they, that they could do a spectacular job, because they would. But I don't think it's appropriate for them to do that. And I, I like that, um, Ms. Fisher brought back the original intent was to have somebody run it. So Option One seems to me to be the option, the only difference between Option One and Option Two is that Option One doesn't put it on our staff to run. Option One, we hire um a qualified entity, quote unquote, for the purpose of establishing the agreements, right? So they would be the they would be the ones that people would call and people would talk to and people would set up. And they would do all of the setups and all of the cleanups and all of the things that we had our staff do previously, which I'm sure they did a great job. But they're not wedding planners. You know, they're not professional bar mitzvah planners. So I think that we need to, um, my vote is going to be for Option One, as long as we have the um stipulation that we can um have resident discounts, city gets to use it for our specific things, so you know, the state of the, of the city once a year. Um, you know, a couple of trainings, because, but we do have to remember that we also have the um c- a community center. You know, um, when we're doing, we're doing trainings, we can do them in the Osborne Community Center as well. It doesn't have to be a, a three-thousand-square-foot ocean-view property when we're sitting there talking. It doesn't have to be a, a three thousand square foot ocean view property when we're sitting there talking about ethics. And you know, we can do that training anywhere and we have other community spaces where we can congregate, you know, um, haven't leased out the Osborne Community Center. We have that there for things that we can do as well. So we don't have only one space where we can congregate. And I think we, we do a really good job of using our outdoor spaces for a lot of our city events as well. Um, and we, uh, we still have the beach club, you know, I mean, we, we have leased that out, but we can use that space as well. So I think we still have an opportunity to do the things that, um, that the residents would want, and I would want to. I mean, if I were a resident, which I am, and I wanted to get married there, I would want to have a special rate because that seems appropriate, but I also don't want it sitting empty. And that's what's been happening. Um, the other part was, do we wait for Ziskovich? And I think that we can still have this discussion. We can still kind of come to, um, at least sharing of our opinions and then have that piggyback into our conversation next Thursday with Ziskovich.
Thank you. Mr. Zegrich.
Thank you. Um, so I had a, a quick question. How many days a year do we use that space for city events or public events?
And whether in the afternoon, which really wouldn't conflict with.
Yeah, it's like evening events. Would it be more than thirty?
Oh, God, no. So I don't have that specific knowledge for a number for you, uh, because since I've been here, it has been sitting empty. But I can, and not utilize as often, um, I can come back to you with that information.
That's okay. Um, I think it would be fair to say it's between like five and twenty, some, somewhere in that range. That's not going to preclude anyone from running an event management business in, in that space. Um, as, as the one who initiated this discussion, um, it was my intent to discuss the entirety of it, both the ballroom and the empty, um, space, because why, you know, deal with one, um, and not the other? Looking at the why this is, I mean, as a city, we are losing so much with the potential of, of these spaces and it's just a shame. They're just sitting there rotting. Dealing with, you know, what is the earnings potential of this? I think you did a very nice, um, breakdown showing rentals and so on. One number that I found particularly interesting and we, we had it on, on our call was, um, in one of the years, we did fifty-eight events and we pulled in almost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars gross, which is roughly between twenty-five hundred and twenty-eight hundred dollars for the room rental alone, which is quite low for a, a space like that, but that's only fifty-eight events. And so when we look at this, whether we're considering a straight rental model or a hybrid model where there's a room fee, um, and I think the room fee allows us to do things like resident discounts, um, a lot easier. And in talking with event management companies, you could easily get five thousand dollars for that space. If you had a hundred events there a year and the city was getting even the lower end of it, we're talking two hundred and eighty to five hundred thousand dollars in income for the city for that one space alone at a hundred events. That leaves two hundred and sixty-five other days for city events and anything else. And that's a rather unsuccessful, um, event planning company. Um, looking at the base rents, you fall in about a hundred and fifty thousand, um, dollars a year for the one space. If you duplicate it for both, maybe you can hit three hundred thousand. But I think, you know, the market is going to tell us what the highest and best use is here and whether that's a hybrid model, a room rent fee or a rental model. Whether we go with issuing an RFP or holding it out for rent, I don't want to pigeonhole ourselves by being too specific on what the revenue model is that we're looking for. We want these guys to compete. So we don't want to come in and hamstring ourselves and say, hey, we just want to see base rent at forty-seven dollars. No, get creative. Tell us how you as a vendor coming in are going to maximize the space, address the issues of public access and city access and turn this into a winning asset. And I think that's going to work really well for the ballroom and the attached kitchen. The other space, it's a blank slate. And as one of the public commentators said, it needs a lot of work. That could mean tenant improvement funds, joint partnership on that. And I think what goes into that space, it's going to have to be more creative. In terms of waiting for Ziskovich, you know, they, they're going to come back with some great ideas. But if somebody in the market doesn't want to do that great idea, it's useless and they're going to charge us to come up with those ideas. When we hold it out for RFP or just straight rental, we get the market's free ideas, um, coming at us and we don't have to pay for that. And I think we'll get a lot more because it's kind of like, we might think that a steakhouse is the best thing for, for that. A steakhouse on the water, because that's what we like, because I'm a Midwest guy and I like steak. And everyone else that's going to come in is going to want to put a seafood restaurant, right? So I want to avoid hamstringing ourselves. So then, you know, third, looking at the structure and our options, you know, I don't think necessarily just holding the whole thing out for commercial lease would yield the best. I think it does need a little bit of guidance because we do have some basic guidelines like we want to ensure that the city can still use the ballroom space at least a few times a year. We want to ensure that if it's an event management, that our, our residents get a discount.
That could be negotiated into a lease, but I understand your point.
Um, but, but holding out almost a very generic RFP saying, bring us your, your best ideas for one space, both space, you know, wha- whatever it is. And we may, may end up with two different vendors, um, one for, for the empty space right now, one for the ballroom space, or one that takes it all. Um, but I really just want to make sure that when we do hold this out, we, we give these guys the opportunities to impress us with their ideas because they're the experts. We are certainly not. Um, I'm one hundred percent against leisure services staff having to manage the day-to-day to this. It needs to be turnkey. Um, so in terms of option one, where we're talking about an independent contractor and so on, that kind of to me feels like that's an employee or contract relationship with the city. Um, if we hold this out for RFP, these guys need to run the show. And however that has to be termed, whether, you know, we're holding it out for RFP for a lease and those lease terms are per square foot or per vent or a hybrid, you know, we can negotiate that. But I really want to make sure that that's taken out of leisure services hands, um, and left with the experts. And the, and the last thing is, I do think we need to be open to see what comes. You know, there could be some very creative ideas that could be great for the city, great, you know, for the public and bring us the dollars that we need. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Now my two cents. Um, I agree with everything, mostly, most of what's been said that we do. I mean, the way I, I was, I chaired the Centennial Committee and the, the first party at the casino was, was the dance involved with that. And when we ladies went to clean up, there was actually no hot water provided in the kitchen. There wasn't a hot water heater. Um, in terms of, I want to see that place used. I mean, we talked about Mr. Mahler, you know, weddings. They paid for those weddings, but they, they rented. I used to go, there was always like, once a month, there was a, a, a dance for people. It was very open, but, um, we are going to, we are challenged over the next few years to figure out how to get some income. Because it is not sustainable at this point for what we have. We have, people don't want to pay for anything. People want free things, wonderful. But we are one of the, we are very, we have a bare budget and we give stuff away. So maybe that's why we have a bear. I don't know. It's a chicken, the egg. So, um, I, I would go with number one. I am very excited to hear the, um, comment from the Gulfstream. I think that would be quite perfect fit, but of course, let's open it up and, and let people compete for it. What? We don't need to manipulate. Well, whatever. I mean, we'll open it up and see what happens. Um, so my, um, and I want to cut off comment on the last one to speak. So I agree with the resident rates and, and reserving stuff. So my feeling would be to go with option one. And I think let's, we've been talking about, how are we for time, Ms. Clerk? Have you been keeping track?
I have. You have fourteen minutes left in your discussion.
Stop it. Um, okay. So, um, keep an eye on that for us. Okay. So each, everybody gets, um, fourteen minutes. Everybody gets three minutes. Mr. McFoy.
I would just strongly encourage differentiating between the two spaces. Um, I think it makes all the sense in the world to the north part. Put that out for, as Commissioner Segred says, RFP or request for ideas or ITNs or whatever it is, some way of getting the widest range of crowdsourcing ideas for that north space. And I'm totally in favor of the idea of that north space being a revenue generator, that it be a commercial resident. I, again, I've always thought of it as, um, and I actually put some effort into finding, I don't remember what they were called, but they were a restaurant. People who found and, you know, facilitated finding restaurants. There were some issues with the condition of the building and access and the location of the dumpsters, some other things that I think we ought to, you know, figure out first and resolve those before we put it out, or at least make it clear that here's how we're, here's the pathway. If you're interested in the space, that we would go forward with it. A hundred percent, you know, a fancy restaurant that might be quite expensive because it is a spectacular location on generates a lot of income. I have, I, I think that would be a very useful use of that space. Again, I would separate that completely from the ballroom because I think we're totally kidding ourselves if you think, and I, I actually have worked with an organization for many years that does sort of things like this, um, out in Wisconsin. It, it, when you do something like team it up with the Gulfstream or team it up with a commercial provider, they are not necessarily the experts at all in community, in the kinds of things that Mr. Mahler referred to. The memories that people have, that, that is not an expertise in a commercial endeavor. That's an expertise in a public space that, that is available to the community. I'm also very skeptical that the same reason that when we put it out for IF, RFP, the ballroom only before, we only got one interested party. When we went into the details, they said, well, wait, you want me to run it as a commercial thing that I have to make money off of, but you've got all these restrictions on it. And that to me was already an indication that you're running up against two competing approaches that don't work well together. I think we've already learned that.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Zegrich, a couple, three minutes?
Um, I, I just wanted to make sure that, that we had clarity for direction for, for staff. It sounds like.
I was about to do that.
Okay, that we're pulling up our, our F P, not such a specific use in terms of allow flexibility, bring everything. Um, flexible business model in terms of how we make. Both rooms are, are one flexible business model, whether it's a rent, a rent plus, a rent revenue share, a room rate, something. Um, and then the, the key takeaways were that we need to take care of our residents if this is going to be an event space. And that, um, leisure services is, is not involved. And I, I think to address the reason why the other one failed, it was a hybrid model. We, the city was still very much involved in that model, um, and we need to take ourselves out of that. And then quickly, the last thing, as far as the dumpsters and the building, experts are going to tell us what to do. We, we, we shouldn't get into that before they come in.
Okay, thank you. So thank you for synopsizing, taking my, my, my work away. Um, so we have, and, and Mr. Brown wasn't even here to hear it. So that's, you know, a whole nother thing. Um, so I think we have direction. I think we have direct. Um, do we need to take a vote on this or we have consensus? We don't need a vote. So I think we're giving direction to staff. Oh, there you are. RFQ, RFP, R, which one?
Oh, this is an RFP, the first time I'm correct.
RFP, okay. Um, for either one or both of those rooms. Leave it open. Bring your ideas. Be creative. And let's see what happens. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Motion for a comfort break?
Motion for, let's have a comfort break. We'll be back. Thank you. Motion for, let's have a comfort break. We'll be back. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, it is eight eighteen and we have reconvened.
Well, there we go. Okay, what's up next? What's up next? Next up is discretionary funds policy, unfinished business B. Madam Clerk, do you have any, um, comments on that?
I do not, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I've got two.
We have two.
And Madam Mayor, if, uh, your call this is the last time. We bring it this far. So we, we have taken the comments, uh, from last time, made whatever, uh, updates seem to be made. Hopefully we can finish this up.
Tonight? Yeah. So essentially what we did is we, um, just set some guidelines for when you have to request, make the request. You've got your entire, you know, up until January third, July thirty first to make the requests. And, um, do I have a vote? Do I have a motion?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion, but don't we need to hear a public comment first or do we do the motion?
No, we're gonna
Uh, I would like to make a motion that we approve this items one, two A and two B, and recalling that this is a discretionary fund, drop C and D.
Do I have a second for that?
Quite quiet.
I second that.
I would like to second it, but the problem is, is I believe C and D. Well, I'd like to drop D, but C I think is what the, what they need in order to write to chat anyway.
I don't, I
Would you go to keep C, drop D?
I shouldn't need.
I mean, I don't know what a complete backup is for.
That was part of my concern and organizations provide a letter. Well, does a letter that says we're going to use it for the things that are being done? They've had a good enough lesson. And if not, who's going to evaluate it if not?
I, I think it's for our, not our, our purpose, you know, with a dog rescue and we're going to rescue dogs or with the cancer society, we're going to cure cancer.
To me, then that's unnecessary extra bureaucracy. That's why I suggest dropping it, but, um,
I could live with just dropping D.
I could live with that.
All right.
So I can second just dropping D.
Okay. Um, so we have a motion in a second. Mr. Segrich?
I was comment, gonna comment on C, um, what if we're using our discretionary funds for like building something or doing a service? The person we're hiring to do that is not going to write a letter.
No, there's, there's guidelines for our money and we're gonna, we're gonna defer to Valentina right?
No, no, correct. I understand that they'd have to be a vendor in our system and B covers that. If I'm hiring a plumber to do something for the city, like help fix a fountain, they're not going to write a letter to the city explaining who they are as an organization.
I'll just leave it to the staff.
For example, to, to fix, to, to fix the, the shades above the exercise equipment in Bryant Park, if I wanted to try to do that, it would be a shade company and they wouldn't necessarily have to write a letter explaining that.
Well, the funds would be used to put up the shades.
Correct. The, the, the vendor doing it.
You'd write the letter, you'd get it to them.
I agree with Mr. McVoy. I think it's extreme. He has given B. They, they have to be a real vendor in our system. I mean, if there are a vendor in our system, there's no point in the letter.
Agreed.
Do we have agreement that we'll drop C and D both?
Unless legally we need something.
So Valentina's state assistant finance director procurement. Um, so I'll just clarify a little bit, maybe it was not, uh, very well explained. Um, in order for us to actually issue a check, we need to have a registered vendor. Then there has to go through the process. They have to have a registered business or whatever business in the state of Florida, and then we will create, uh, we will verify the documentation and create a vendor. In order for us to actually process the payment and to assist basically the assistant who is going to be processing your request, it, it's very helpful if there is a backup documentation provided for that, that backup documentation may be in a form of email. It may be, uh, a quotation, a letter from a vendor or something that is indicating who is going to be paid. Uh, and where this check and this purchase order has to go to. We have to issue the purchase order. We have to then prepare a check and then that check needs to be going to the person who is specified, uh, to be to have a remittance address. I don't want to be overcomplicate this, but we just have to have a details of where it goes.
Not maybe.
Yeah. And, and it is, um, it is just a simple process when we, uh, when we have our auditors to look at everything. They will look at the discretionary funds that is used by you. So we will need to have some kind of backup to say, um, Commissioner Segrich wanted this, uh, repair guy to go and fix this up and here it is, and this is a documentation for that. So we do get audited, uh, every year by our external auditors for, um, random purchases, but we, we can, we can get audited.
So
All right, Mr. McVoy?
Uh, just to clarify, the one that you need more is D. That, you know, something that tells from the well, I'm, I'm trying to understand. You need something that says, hey, what's this for? Um, who should we send the check to roughly? What is it about? Is it, you need that kind of document and that's
The reason, yeah, I will go clarify both. So the reason for C is, and I will give you certain examples. So for example, you may request, oh, I need you to, uh, I want to donate five hundred dollars to this organization. Now this organization may not have, uh, that you use the name of that organization may not be that clear. Maybe that's not the legal name of that organization, et cetera. So something from that organizational letter or even instruction for us to you know, to you with something that is going to provide that legal entity name. So we can verify, we have about ten thousand vendors. So in order for us to actually pay it to the right entity, uh, we, we need some kind of information to confirm that. So that's the reason why is that here? It is not really, oh, I, you know, it has to be some kind of official uh, offer. It just has to have something that is going to indicate what is the vendor name that we can send a correct payment to. It helps, uh, also with when you're donating to schools. Uh, you may donate to middle school and then there are multiple organization in that school. So when we are writing a check, we want to make sure that your donation goes to a that particular organization within that school. So it's, it's a, it's a complex process because, uh, you donate to school. However, we have to issue the check to the county that is going to then pass the money to the school and then the school is going to pass the money to, I don't know, the band, for example. So it gets, it gets complicated. There, there's it, 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 we have multiple occasions where we had issues so that the check doesn't go to the right entity. So we just want to make sure.
I quote C and D.
Yes. We, we can clarify.
I think all D, all requests that the commission shall be in writing. I mean, complete backup. I, I want to donate to this dog rescue. It's, she rescues dogs. I mean, what's the backup there, right? The fact that she's vendor.
Yeah.
You know, it should be. So I would actually say all requests that we shall be writing period. Thank you. Um, why don't you make a form? That tells us what you want and we fill it out.
Okay. I, I think that would be, yeah, I think that would be possible.
You know, and it says commissioner's name, entity, amount, purpose, handed in, signed, sealed, delivered.
Okay.
Um, and then it can, it can come back to us and it can be, you know, cause, um, Shona takes and has a whole list of what we did in the signed forms and the finished things and copies of the checks can all be in that file that.
Okay. Yeah, we can. I think form would work.
Make a form, we'll fill it out. You tell us exactly what you need.
Okay.
Should we drop C and D and the form takes its place?
Yeah, why don't we hold off and bring back the form and then we'll vote yes on it.
Okay.
Thank you. But Sarah's got her thing on. Oh, she should push out, but she didn't and now. Maybe she want, maybe she
You stole my thunder, Miss Commissioner May.
No, I'm sorry. I could just read your mind from California. It's getting kind of spooky in here. What a team, what a team. Jimmy, do you want to still say something?
Let's say form drops C.
What?
If we have a form, drop it up.
We're gonna see the form.
I, I would, I would recommend that if you do have a form that maybe the form is emailed or something so that we don't have
Can we fill it out?
Uh, do, do you want to do it? Uh, we can do the fillable forms. That's absolutely no problem.
Whatever's easiest for you and us.
Not all, uh, commissioners, uh, can, uh, are.
Right, allegedly? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 no. Uh, what I'm saying that some commissioners have, uh, issues using technology. So we just have to.
Get over it. Get over it. We don't have any of those up here.
We will do both.
Excuse me, Valentina. Valentina, I can very much fill out a fillable form.
It was now meant for you.
Oh, I, it's okay. I own it. I am not the technology person on the dais. I get it.
Okay. Uh, are you done? Are you done? Okay. That yours. So we have a form that we're going to, uh, you'll come back with.
We will come back.
We do a public comment, um.
Oh, darn it. We meant to do that first.
Gotta do a motion and a thing first. Okay, um.
But this wasn't
Thank you, Fisher, five oh eight North A Street. One thing that I had asked you all to please do or have done is to have this on the city's website. I think that should be part of the policy that it gets posted quarterly, however, whatever version you want onto the city's website by commissioner name, by entity and by amount. Um, because I think the public should know what people are giving to, um. So I would like to see that.
I feel like the new software does that.
Should
Software, I've been playing with the new, when you put a little question in, it's, it's No, not that thing, but the new software, it gives us kind of a Yeah.
I would like to see that in your policy.
Good idea. I agree. So we have direction to staff. Um, Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
I have no comments on this item, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm moving, moving along. I think we've given staff, uh, direction. That number C, we did that.
C, motion to approve resolution number thirty-three, twenty twenty-five, updating the cemetery rules and regulations.
But no, we, we decided, I think, not to go there, to have them come back with the, uh, because they're making some changes in the language.
Oh, cemetery.
How would I know that?
Never mind. No, no.
Cemetery. Okay.
So I'm on C. I just made a motion.
Sorry, I have, I want to watch the hockey game.
Second.
Madam Mayor, my, my, Madam Mayor, my hand is up.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, yeah. Um, so when I read through the backup, I did not see when we went through this originally, we had added language that there would be no loud music played. And that is not under, um, section ten, under personal conduct, conduct within the city cemeteries. That was not listed.
It's under four K.
Where?
Um, I found it under four K. No loud music or noise is performed or played unless it's part of burial service.
Four K. Uh, do we think that it should be under personal conduct though?
Yeah, why not? It's there. What is it under?
It's under care of cemeteries limitation, responsibility of city and public. Which to me, I would think that that would be a, a public, a personal conduct within the city cemetery.
We did. I mean, actually she makes sense. She wants
It hap, it happens once in a while.
Like at the end, it said it, but instead of ending at each of them die.
Yes.
Where are people suggesting?
Change that to I, that makes sense. I made the motion and I will amend it to switch K from page or item four K to item ten I.
Thank you for
You are loitering and having food and drinks and littering and having sex. Does the second agree?
I agree.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so, um, do we have any public comment? No, we did it already? No, we don't.
Section four I, there shall be no overnight parking. In recent deductions, we've talked about other areas of the code where that's not sufficient, where we needed to provide specific times. And I would ask the city manager, do we have those time recommendations?
Closing to opening.
Well, with now with our newly, um, fenced cemeteries, um, the actual gate is open at, uh, dawn and it's closed at dusk. So we don't want to have that issue because there's no way to actually get into the cemetery at night.
And you don't get out, you stay there until tomorrow. I guess, right? Where you call the pulley.
Yeah, like Bryant Park when we close the gates.
Bryant Park doesn't have a gate that you can't get out. I mean, if I go to the cemetery to visit my relative at five thirty and I get emotionally caught up and it's, what time does the cemetery close?
All of our parks are dawn to dusk. Follows the same thing. But when you do the, the sweep, we, we don't
I think you just add, um, cars must be removed before closing. Just that people anybody, any problem with that in addition? Great.
Nope.
Okay.
We have a motion. We have a second.
I'll see if we amend that second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's been, thank you very much. Thank you, Sarah. Um, A, new business. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, who was the second?
Uh, Mr. Segrich. What?
She said Anthony.
Yeah, okay. It's a, it's a cooperative effort. So
Public comment on this item.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, no, I, I apologize. It's G.
Okay, so all in favor? B, um, motion approved by Mr. McVoy, second by May, M- Miss May. Any cards, ma'am? Do we have a card? New business B. Yep, new business B. Um, so all in favor? Moving along to C.
Thanks, girl.
Motion to Thank you very much. It was eloquent and well done.
Motion to approve for quarter five.
Uh, do I have a second? For, um,
Second.
Okay, all, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much.
I guess I'm, I do.
You, your eye on that one. C and D. Discussion for the purpose of directing the staff regarding the golf course holes number three. The reason you're all here tonight.
I will say that the Panthers are winning on nothing.
For now.
For now.
Yeah, I know she's Canadian too.
Okay, so for this, we're going to do is a discussion. So do you want to hear the public comments first?
Yeah, fine.
Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment cards, uh, comment, comments on this issue?
I have one.
Okay, why don't you read it and then we'll go to in, in person.
Okay. The comment is from Nancy Morrissey at three ten North Lakeside Drive. For the safety of the golfers or are at, or at near the hole three tee box as well as the residents whose property is but the hole three fairway. I favor the second option, shortening the hole to a par three. Golfers use irons. Golfers use irons are less likely to cause anything like property damage we've experienced and the city needs to protect us from possible personal injury. That is the last comment I have on anything tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very, on anything, that's it. Okay, great, thank you. Um, okay, so I'm just gonna call your name. Come on up. You've got two minutes to speak. The clerk will stop you if it gets past two minutes. Um, and then, and so after, we're gonna, we've decided we're listening to public comment before we start discussing, just to get the sense of what folks are saying. So I'm gonna start with Mr. Stephen Russell, followed by Anthony Morata, followed by Pam Trillo Clayhane.
Hello, everybody. I'm Stephen Russell, two-two-six North Lakeside Drive.
There you go.
Uh, my comments are, I'm supportive of making a change. However, I don't feel that either change A or B goes far enough because I believe that both of those will just move the problem to the residents that are further south. Right now, the folks that are experiencing the most difficulty are the ones closest to the tee box, usually about two-ten, two-hundred-ten yards off the fairway. The balls are going right and hitting them. Moving this will now actually just move the problem down to the homes that are just further south um and closer to the um, the hole, particularly with the move to uh actually uh position the tee box to hit further left. In order to come back to the, the target area, they're now gonna have to hit further right. So they're gonna be closer to the water, that pond, now they're gonna be hitting back right again. So actually, I think it could exacerbate the problem for the the residents that are a little bit further south. The biggest problem that hasn't been addressed is the target, the target everybody's shooting for is too far right. Uh, the target needs to be moved a little bit to the left. So I don't think either proposal A or B goes far enough. Uh, both of them will absolutely help the folks that are the primary complainers and most affected. But it's gonna ultimately end up hurting and actually making it worse, I think, for the folks that are a little bit further south in the, you know, two hundreds uh, like me.
Like your address.
Like me. I get, I get, I get. I, well, well, I get balls weekly. Uh, some have almost hit us. Um, so it is a danger. It is a danger. Uh, and uh unfortunately, no one yells for or anything, so it comes out of the, just comes at you, right, exactly, just like that. So it is absolutely a problem, has to be addressed. I just don't think either option A or B uh goes far enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, up next is Anthony Marana, followed by Mr. Clayhane.
Evening, everyone. Uh, Anthony Marota, three-two-seven North Lakeside Drive. Uh, I know there's been comments of somebody was hit. That was actually me, uh, coming out of my front door one day. Um, the, the first and main thing, though, that I do want to say is, is I would ask, and I spoke to some of the neighbors, that you don't make a decision tonight. Um, we appreciate that it's here. We appreciate the work. Uh, what we would ask is that somebody's designated to speak to the group. Um, just to go over some of these thoughts and not kind of rush to it. I know staff does their thing. They put that in front of you guys. Uh, we think that would be beneficial. We'd ask you guys to please consider that and perhaps move your vote um, to uh, to your next meeting. Um, so there's a lot of talk about who's getting hit, right? So we know that the people that are right on the course, they have the uh, the presumed risk. Of course, we're all on the other side that are getting uh hit. So I've sent you guys some videos. I don't know if you had a chance to see them. My cameras don't go off just for the ball, so somebody has to be there to hear it. But you've heard how they pound into the house. You've seen them hit the sidewalks. I had more, but I didn't know what your email accounts would take in. You see them getting hit the car right now. Imagine a person there. Right? So it's been property damage so far. There's a lot of people that walk along there. I know my neighbor Pierre had sent in a calculation. So uh, as uh, as affected parties, not only are we uh having our property damaged, but we're taxpayers too, right? So we don't want people getting hit and having liability and lawsuits and that in the city. I understand that the property damage part's been dismissed, but it's really about uh, about the injury. So we don't want to see that either. Um, the only other thing I'll add is, is part of what I would like to see in some of the others as a solution is the golfers don't care. We've encountered them. I've offered to help their game by putting their clubs in the intercoastal and they just say they don't care, right? Doesn't, doesn't matter to them. So when they're blasting that ball, let's just see how far I can get it, right? Mitch served me up five beers already. Let's see what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd ask for a statement for them to sign ahead that they have liability.
Thank you. Ms. Clayhane, followed by Mr. Walsh.
I'm Trillo Clayhane, four-ten North Ocean Breeze. Um, having lived right across the street from Mr. Marata um, on the golf course in the past, it's, it's just a nightmare and I'm glad that you're doing something about it. So thank you so much for calling this meeting. Really appreciate it. Um, I don't like the idea of uh making the problem worse by, by moving it further south, as, as the gentleman said, it has to be addressed. But the whole golf course needs to be addressed. And I know you're gonna be having talks on that too. I mean, if it's a temporary fix that changes it to a par three, I know people don't like that, that are serious golfers because it, you know, it, it affects the reputation of the course. I still think there's enough land that it could remain as is, but um we, we can find a permanent solution if we're all working together on it and, and really get out there and look at it and, and see with the professionals what's best to do for it. But in the long run, I want to remind you that the golf course needs to be lifted because of the new FEMA maps and the flood maps, homes are already getting flooded. And we have to preserve the homeowners on that golf course. I'm not there anymore, so I'm not speaking for myself anymore. But it has to happen and we need to start thinking about very expensive things that are being done in Boca Raton right now, but more honestly, in New York City, in, in Europe, all over the place, in the Netherlands, in Sweden and Denmark, in places that they're actually creating retention ponds and things underneath that are mechanical. Things go over waterways. I mean, it's incredible what can happen, but it takes money. And that's where your public-private partnerships come into place. When you're deciding all of that other stuff, now that we're coming back to the golf course, please remember, that's the place, that money you guys will never come to or find in a million years. But that's the place where you can ask for it. And you can provide resilience and protect all those homeowners along that golf course.
Thank you that time.
For years to come. Thank you.
Walsh. Followed by Edward Canet. And Martha John.
Uh, Mac Walsh, four-one, uh, North Lakeside Drive. Uh, hello, Mayor Rash, Commissioner May, uh, McBoy, Malaga and Segrich. Uh, I'm a resident four-one North Lakeside Drive on the western side of the street, not the eastern side of the street. Um, I'm also a business owner and the father of an eight-month-old baby girl. Um, I'm one of the citizens currently suffering harm. Um, for the sake of the conversation, I'll note I'm an avid golfer and a member of multiple clubs, both in Palm Beach County and overseas. Regarding golf balls leaving the third hole at Lake Worth Club, to date, we've had our car impacted, causing a thousand dollars plus of damage, numerous human near misses. As recently as this weekend, my mother was just barely missed while visiting from out of town. A relatively new homeowner, she had no idea the threat was so real, and countless golf balls throughout her property. The issue continues to impact us every single day. While working my yard today, I he- heard multiple golf balls hitting my neighbor's garden, on the roof and in the road. We've asked the city, its staff and our elected officials to do something and prevent this continued harassment and threat. However, nothing of any real material impact has been done. We've shared countless emails and reports of continued harassment. The city stated they'd be making minor changes to the teeing area. Newspaper articles have been written by journalists and these changes have done nothing to make things better. They're at best lipstick and it works horribly misguided and poorly prioritized. We've shared as much and the city continues to operate status quo. The city staff continues to allow the hole to operate per usual. I'm certain this would not be the case if Betty Rashford, Tiana McKay, lived on Lakeside Drive, which I noticed Betty made many promises to address the situation proactively in her past election. That has not been the case to date. I want to emphasize, no proposed solution for the third hole will be sufficient outside of turning into a par three with properly located tee box. The city proposes a new teeing location closer to the fence line. We believe this is unnecessary and contributes significantly to stated costs of the project. Using existing scaled and levied fairway, leveled fairways, are you conditioned to be clipped tightly, easily modified into a massive teeing area at little or no cost? Can even be visually appealing. The green itself is great and this would accentuate the good features of the hole. Please take our feedback into consideration. We look to solve this issue and address the problem thoroughly. The golf course dilapidated, the food at the beach club is inedible. However, simply because this has become the standard doesn't mean we should allow it to operate dangerously. In addition, I do not want to threaten my eight-month-old daughter or wife any longer. Thank you.
Mr. Canet? Mr. Canet?
When we moved to Florida, uh, the basic reason was.
First, you have to say your name and your address.
Eduardo Canet, C-A-N-E-T. When we moved to Florida, uh, the main reason was to be near the.
Mr. Canet, huh, you've got to say your address too.
Four-oh-two North Lakeside Drive.
Thank you.
Uh, Lake Worth Beach, Florida, three-three-four-six-zero.
Thank you very much.
Telephone number six-four-six.
Social Security.
Um, but how, shortly after moving to the house, we were bombarded by golf balls. And both my wife and I prohibited the grandchildren from being outside the house. Um, the interesting thing about uh the golf, the golf course is that it's uh it's a mediocre golf course, frankly.
Thank you.
We wanted uh, looking closely at the uh rationale that management had for uh not having a changing from par three to par two. Uh, it didn't seem to me to be correct in, in many things. Uh, Golf Magazine ranked the best hundred holes in the United States by par three, four and five. Uh, management says that par, the par uh three at uh, par four at the uh Lake Worth, uh golf is uh one of the best holes. It's not ranked at all. Uh, they also say that uh if they uh, if they move, they change from par four to par three, uh, they were gonna lose X number of yards and they, that, that's gonna be uh ranked less. Well, interesting enough, uh, Palm Beach Post.
Thank you that time.
You only had two minutes.
Okay, I'll do it quickly. I'll speak in Spanish.
Finish your sentence.
Um, it's not ranked, it's uh, it's not ranked at all. Out of the eighteenth, it ranked seventeenth. Uh.
All right, we, we do have to stop you, though.
And the last, just one last thing.
I'm gonna get in trouble. Never thought you'd keep going.
Okay.
Thank you. And we'll talk. Ms. Jean-Lucure? And you've probably been taught not to say your name and address.
Yes, uh, Martha Jolacor. I live at three-twenty-eight North Lakeside Drive. Um, I've bought the house back in two thousand and fifteen. I know I bought on a golf course and I was willing to take that risk and it was really not a big problem. I don't know what has happened in the past three years, but it's become physically dangerous. I'm the one in the article. I don't know if you've read the article, but we brought copies. Um, we had three broken windshields. My husband's new car and then my housekeeper twice, which is really sad. Um, it's dangerous. For some reason, my driveway is heading towards my neighbor's houses. It goes right down my driveway and hits across the street. Um, I hope and I believe, I do play the course. I love it. It's beautiful. It's on the intercoastal. It's a lot of fun. Um, from the ladies tee, I don't have the problem. So the closer up you are, I think the better. Uh, I'm not a true expert, but I do play golf. And I think if we could get closer, if it were a par three or, or much shorter and people were using irons and not these huge clubs, we'd all be a lot safer. Um, I don't know if they need to adjust the hole. I'd, I don't know, but I think starting closer would be better.
Thank you. Are you a member of the ladies golf?
No, I'm not. Okay, no, thanks.
Uh, Stephen, Stephen Norton, followed by Greg Richter.
I'm Martha's husband. I am a golfer.
Just your name and address.
And my name and address, Stephen Norton. I live at three-twenty-eight North Lakeside Drive. And I understand uh people living further south being nervous they're gonna get hit as it moves forward. If you make it a par three and put it at the right length, you only use an iron to hit into that green and then none of these houses are gonna be an issue. And there are a lot of very, very good golf courses that are par seventy or seventy-one still ranked. There's some ranked in the top ten in the country. Not public courses, but ones that have the less par. So that is not gonna affect people playing this and what. It's the most popular, the cheapest course to play
Right.
in Palm Beach County. That's why. And it's, it's like this, but right now, tonight, they could say tomorrow morning, say, no iron, no woods can be used on that par, on the tee right now. And that would significantly, without doing anything, change that. Because unfortunately, there are a lot of novice players hitting into the wind, the southeast wind, and all those houses, all the way down both sides of the street, some even two blocks over are being hit.
Become, and for some reason, you're right.
I don't know what's happening. It's the big Bertha driver and the Pro V one balls and so on and so forth. You can hit the ball much further than you used to be able to. But it's really simple. You can make it a par three, just paint a white line. Golf courses, when they're being repaired, do that temporarily all the time. And doesn't cost anything until you get the money to figure out exactly how to do it. But this could be stopped. We were there last weekend and I collected twenty balls in one week and it was, I mean, they're hitting.
Garage sale, you know?
Oh, no. The guy, the guy further south has six thousand golf balls and you were at his house.
Yep.
We were there and, yeah, and that was last summer. It's, it's only gotten worse.
Yeah.
Thank you that time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Greg Richter.
Hey, how you doing? Uh, Greg Richter, twelve-oh-two South Palmway. Uh, I would like to say that I'm a golfer. I used to play a lot of golf. Um, I'm, I was on the greens committee at my former club when I lived up north. And I had played the Lake Worth Golf Course quite a bit. Uh, the problem, you know, golf is a game of risk and reward. And the way that hole is set up, there is no risk in going right over that bunker and trying to cut that corner there. And as a result, you have people just, you know, when they take the risk, sometimes you have consequences to it. One of the things you can do in reorienting the tee box to face it a little further, orient it a little further left is also in that whole area there, what we did at our club, because we had residents around there. We let that grass grow. We made it penal to even attempt to go over there because right now you can stay on that tee box and I've, I've gone to go over that, that, that bunker and I shouldn't be doing that. Um, so that's one, one way of, you know, of, of, you know, helping this out if you don't want to make it, you know, a par three. The, uh, one or two other things you can do, a lot of clubs will run either a small fence for about twenty yards from the tee box down on the right-hand side to prevent, you know, early start to that direction or a hedge. Um, uh, my parents lived on a golf course and they had a, you know, the tee box near their house had a hedge that went twenty yards down. So it kept a lot of balls, you know, the star of that direction, kept them from going there. So anyway, that's just one thought is to let that grow there. And I mentioned to uh Commissioner May, one of the things we did, we let the grass grow in a lot of areas to save maintenance costs and we became an auto bond certified golf course. And that's one of the things you can look at, look at doing. And it could help us, you know, in the long run. It will be, in order for that course to really be what it needs to be, it'll, it'll be a public-private partnership to get it to where I think we all would like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just, I'm gonna start with a comment. I, I have met with the neighbors, some of the neighbors, not everybody, for quite some time, a number of years, as a matter of fact. I went up there like three, four years ago. And let me just say this about that. We've had a sta- a change in staff. And I have a staff now, I have a staff now, we have a staff now that is responsive. I, I was completely blind, just completely blocked with the old staff. They just weren't gonna do anything about it. So I'm really grateful to our current uh assist, you know, acting city manager, Tiana, our PGA golf person, to finally be able to actually have a conversation about this. So I just want to thank staff for that change in attitude because it was very frustrating for a number of years. I'm gonna call Mr. Brown first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did want to, uh, you just mentioned him, but Marty Capano is here. He is our PGA, uh, sort of like golf bro who has decades of experience. So as you guys kind of go into your comments or questions, he is here to give us his professional.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I see Mr. McBoys. Um, it's nine o'clock. Okay, I see Mr. McBoys. Let's keep it to five minutes so that we don't get crazy.
With the amount I know about golf, I don't know that I'm gonna make it.
That's okay.
But, uh, what, what I'm hearing, I've also talked with some of the residents. I haven't gotten to. But what what I'm hearing, I've also talked with some of the residents. I haven't gotten to everybody who came. So I'm very grateful that people came tonight and shared firsthand. I'm particularly grateful that some of you who are golfers and do know something about what the effects would be of some of the changes are speaking up. Me, the comment that registered most, and it's not just because of his T-shirt, although I'm jealous, was the idea, let's not make a decision right now as a commission. Let's find some way to gather the folks, including the folks that are not only on the opposite side, but maybe some that are even further away. Get a little more data on, you know, this is really happening and get some drawouts of what are possible things. Mr. Richter, I think, has given some good, you know, as a non golfer, they sounded plausible to me. I think what was said about risks and rewards, which might have been Mr. Richter, also may change that. I I'm not, I don't know enough to to be wise. I do hear clearly the issue of liability and it's more than just property damage. That's significant on its own, but that there's a human liability risk. So to me, the idea of staff or somebody working with a group of the folks coming up with a couple of solutions, dealing with the uncertainty, how much effect is this going to have negatively on whatever option on the course? Is there really a case for that? Is that case not dead? Sort all that stuff out. And when you've gotten that far with some actual drawings, this is what we're going to do. Here's what the cost is. I hear and I appreciate the the comment. The folks who are affected are not looking to force the golf course to spend outrageous amounts, particularly if we are going to do something more overhaul at a later point. But at the same time, let's not just ignore this longer. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Ms. May.
I just have a couple of questions for Marty, if that's okay. First, first question I have is I I know nothing about golf. Just straight up. I I know enough to pay for my husband's membership, so he goes for four hours. And that's about as much as I know about golf. So can you limit the kind of club a golfer uses at a hole?
You you really don't want to do that. And reason is, you know, you you're going to take away golfer's freedom. The other thing is you're going to have to have somebody out there twenty four seven watching that tee box to make sure that they use the club that is going to be safe. So that that's really.
Okay. And secondly, did you hear anything from the public comment that I saw Tiana writing some stuff down that would modify any of these options that you've given us?
To modify the options?
Yeah. So you gave us three options and did you hear anything from the ideas that people brought that you say, like the grass or whatever? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, it's a good idea. It's a good idea. And I spoke with Commissioner Segrich a little bit about this on the other side of the bunker. And and one of the residents as well, we can make it more hazardous, plant some extra shrubbery. That was mentioned, bring up the rough higher. Did you turn people from carrying that bunker? That that's a that's a good idea, too. It's that's that's not going to major reset the problem. One of the options that I'm looking at is, you know, moving that tee box, changing the angle of it to force people to aim in a different direction. Because the tee box right now, it's pointed, it's pointed pretty far.
Yeah.
And to put in trees, right, more trees right next to the tee box. You know, we want to move the tee box closer to these trees next to the tee box and put some more trees. You know, to make it more of a shoot where people are really forced to aim left and not to the right, plus those trees will block the balls, you know. Yeah, the modern putting one of one of the modifications brought up just a fence next to the tee box. Now, putting the trees there, I think, would have that same effect.
A fence would be ugly.
You could be, you could put a fence, I mean, you could put a fence all the way down. That's the only way to really solve it with a fence for majority of the whole. And we have to put high fence. That's going to get pretty costly.
And and it's ugly. I mean, people didn't move on a golf course to tear the fence. If you were sitting up here, which option would you choose?
The option a par three option, a par three option is going to going to cause less balls going out, going to the house. There's no doubt about it because people are using shorter clubs, okay? I think we're going to, I think we're going to see results by changing the angle of the tee box and putting trees next to the tee box. How many is that going to reduce? I can't give you a number offhand. I I think it's going to reduce. But obviously, if you use a three, if you change and do more three, it's going to be a shorter hole or using shorter clubs. And it's going to, it's going to reduce more balls than if you just change the tee box share.
So if you change the tee box and put in the shrub, well, I'm just trying to think about what would be the least cost, least expensive way to start. And then whatever we decide to start with, if it if it doesn't solve the problem, we do the next and then the next and then the next, if that makes sense.
But the least expensive one, yeah, is to change the angle of the tee box, put a few more trees there.
And then start there and see what happens? And so if we started there with with option one. Well, it's kind of option one and three combined. So you're switching the tee box existing to the to the right or changing it to aiming it towards the left and adding the landscaping. Okay, and then, but not making it a par three because we don't want to shorten the course.
If you make it, yeah, if you make it a par three, we're taking a lot of yardage down stuff, which is changing.
So maybe we can say that would be our our last resort if we needed to do it because we know it will help, but it's not ideal for the game of golf.
It's it's not ideal for it. It wouldn't be ideal for golf course.
Okay. And then the other option was that one of the residents has suggested kind of going back to the drawing board. Do you feel you've gotten enough input from the residents to be able to that the these are our our options that we should make a decision tonight?
By me one more time.
So one of the options that was to have a liaison, one of us be a liaison with the golfers and the people who are affected. Do you think we need to continue to study more? Or do you think that these are our options of let's start with one and see what happens and move from there?
Yeah, we have, these are basically, you know, I don't see any other options other than, you know, changing the direction of the tee box. Putting putting a fence down or netting, I should say, down the whole right side.
Yeah, we're not doing that.
Or making it a par three. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's not a whole lot else you could do. I mean, if you want to shut the hole down because.
Well, no, we're not going to have seventeen hole course. Okay, that answers my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Segrich. Ms. Malaga, I see your hand is up. We're calling on Mr. Segrich first.
So.
Okay, I'm just chilling.
Option one, and we're removing the tee box. Are you going to be setting up a temporary tee box like one of the 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 commenter said, you know, painting an area and saying, hey, you guys tee off from here while we while we shift this tee box?
Yeah, we would have to set up a temporary tee box. I look at it. We would set up a temporary tee box in a similar manner is the way we want to set up the new tee box. There's trees a little forward in that tee box that's currently there, then we could set up a temporary tee box and have it aim to the left, the trees blocking.
So not not being a golfer, is there any wisdom in setting up a temporary par three tee box and testing to see if that actually works for a month before going and actually making permanent changes? Or is that a ridiculous thought?
I mean, that's an option.
Okay. So, you know, how how I view it, I I I think the answer is going to be somewhere in between all of these. I I don't necessarily, given the feedback from the public and just what I'm hearing. I I think there is wisdom in going back and at least meeting with the public some more on this with with our expert there. I'm not as concerned about changing it to a par three because in the end, I think we're going to do a golf course redesign hopefully some point soon. And we can reclaim whatever it is we lost by by doing that. And, you know, what I hear all the time, the attractiveness of our golf course is it's nostalgic, it's right near the water, and it's the cheapest place in Palm Beach to go. And and people just like it, you know, it's fun and laid laid back. I don't think reducing it to a par three is going to change any of those those people. I could be wrong, but that's kind of what where I'm at with that. I think if we we do decide to to move the the tee box and reangle it, we we have to do something to prevent early projectiles. Whether it's trees right there or or so on, because having having, you know, hit a ball far and watched it hook, once it gets up, it's going. I mean, there's there's not a fence further down the line. That's going to stop that ball from from hitting these these houses. I also think, you know, if we do go the route of moving the tee box, we have to heavily consider how do we make it extremely painful to go over that sand bunker and get to that tee? They really have to be encouraged to to go around. So, you know, I I would look at that this and say, you know, we need a little bit more design in some of these temporary options and think about do we try a temporary par three and see if that works? I mean, you know, we'd be reliant on the residents to to get that data, you know, and and have to trust them of being good stewards of that. But if that's an option, I I think that's a good place to start before we consider really investing in this and going down the wrong path and then have to reinvest. So I think a combination of talking more with the residents, but doing some sort of temporary test of these solutions would be warranted.
Thank you. Ms. Ms. Malaga?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm one of the golfers that would have been out there and I'm one of the reasons why I don't golf anymore because I would be the one hitting the balls that end up in your house and shattering your windshield. So I gave up the favorite pass in my golf. I would like some clarification from Director McKay and and Marty in regards to, I believe that I was told that we've already started with the landscaping and we started making some of these changes already, have we not?
We've started, you know, this week, we're going to be starting to change the the shape of the fairway also that that that's just aesthetically, it's going to make the hole look a little bit different. That's the first change that we're going to explore because we haven't done the tee box yet. We haven't gotten to do that.
All right. So we haven't already added more landscaping or new signage?
I'm going to sign. The sign is already out. That's been up for.
Okay, because I I was told that the landscaping had already been done and that that was already in the work. So that has not been done.
No, the landscaping hasn't been done.
Okay.
Director of Leisure Services, yes, Vice Mayor, you are correct that there is a signage up and that we are planning on doing the mowing and that we are looking at these options. So but we have not planted any trees as of yet.
Okay, I I'm kind of in favor of of going back and kind of having a conversation with the people who are most affected. But at the end of the day, Marty is our expert and that's why we hired him to be our golf pro and to run the golf course. I I don't, I'm not in favor of making it a par three. But after listening to Commissioner Segrich, you know, yes, we are going to be going out for a triple P on this, hopefully soon. And I'm just hoping that if we changed par to a par three and we took away the yardage that takes us under six thousand, that we would not see a decline next season, which would be the end of this year and the beginning of next year. Because as we know, the golf courses, you know, it's it's right there financially, you know, every year is is make it or break it. And I'm just, you know, we've been putting so much money into this golf course. As I said before, between the new golf carts two years ago, the the golf cart paths being re-cemented and we will be going out to to do something with the beach club in as regards to releasing that or something in the future. I just personally don't want to put a lot of money into the golf course if we don't know what the next step is. But I also want to address the issue. So I think moving the existing tee box, it would be the best option. And if it doesn't work, then let's go back to, you know, to to the drawing board. But I think that we need to take the the options that are least cost to our budget and the fastest ones to get done and see if they work. So I would be in favor of option three, then option one, and at the at the very last. If it doesn't work and we don't get where we need to be, then talking about option two.
Thank you. Okay, my turn. The I I agree with Mr. Segrich in terms of, you know, and we have heard, we've we've certainly heard from them. I mean, in terms of having another meeting, we've certainly heard a lot from the neighbors. We kind of know what their what their thought is. They favor the 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 par three. You know, it's not a championship course. It's not a course that people come to be incredibly challenged. It's a wonderful course that people love to play. And someday, hopefully, in the next future, we'll have giant improvements, too. We all know that. So I I like Mr. Segrich's idea of making it a par three on a temporary basis, see how it works. It does won't cost a lot of money to do it. My other question, though, is we're talking about trees down the side. If we're going to put trees, I mean, how how much will it cost to get enough trees or push, you know, significant amount of bushes to thwart the right side? What? You don't have to. Right, that's what I'm asking. So so my thought is, you know, we're not the ones sitting getting bombarded by golf court, you know, I'm really, and it's, like I said, I've been talking to these folks for a long time and it's gotten, it's not gotten better. Not gotten better. We need, we need people that can make a sixty foot putt. Right? No, that was last week at Oak at Oakmont. I watch golf. So so I would go with the par three temporary, you know, do it like that, see what that this is what the folks up there are asking for. And that's that's how I would go. Mr. Segrich and Mr. Boy.
One other just quick thing. If you look at the north side of the golf course and you look at the houses, the greenery and the trees, there's a lot more of them. On the south side, a lot of the houses and yards don't have any trees at all. Maybe there's an incentive program for people to put a shade tree in their yard, which could act as a a defense buffer as well. And I'm just saying because it's would be a lot less than lining the entire length there that got poisoned in the past when we did it.
Yes, I heard. Yeah. Oh, yeah, somebody poisoned everything we did. Mr. McBoys?
Yeah, I I think I heard from the commission quite a bit of enthusiasm to do a little bit more meeting with the the folks most affected. I think it would be a really good idea to have Marty, I believe is the name, our our expert, meet with the group here, especially from some of the golfers. I don't know if we have a way to defer to the mayor if there's some way to do comment, but and I'm hearing quite a bit of enthusiasm for the idea of moving it from par four to par three, even some from you. And I'm hearing that the counter arguments that, well, it'll make the golf course less attractive. I'm hearing that, well, the things that make the golf course attractive are the location on the water, are that it's not very expensive, that it's kind of relaxed course. All of that sounds to me like the par three or four to par three probably isn't going to be that big a hit. And so the idea, especially if you do it on a temporary basis. But I really think the communication with the and 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 not just us telling the residents, but actually a back and forth communication is what's the next step and then likely that would lead to this.
Some of us have had a lot of back and forth conversations with the with the neighbors. I have no objection to it. How about if we did this? How about if we did the temporary par three? And then have a conversation with the neighbors about how is it working? Go a few months and see how is it working? To me, that would be the most logical one. Okay, we have, we've been, we've been, we've been in very deep communication, deep communication. So, Mr. Segrich?
I would like to make a motion.
Please do.
I would like to make a motion to instruct staff to explore the option of doing a temporary par three. Coordinate with the residents to measure how that is going and while doing that, gather feedback from the immediately affected residents and then bring it back for a permanent decision on what we do as a final solution.
And how long do you think that should be?
I would leave that up to our our expert, like what period of time do you think we would need to really understand?
Three months, you'll know, you'll know in three months.
I think, I think let's let's let Marty make that decision.
If I can just add one other thing to to this, the idea, just to make you you all aware of what what would happen to the golf course if we do make it a par three overall, okay, just to give you some facts. Just so you have all the information, okay? We are currently right now at six thousand yards from the back seats, okay? There's two different classes of golf courses. There's traditional regulation and then there's executive courses, okay? Traditional regulation courses are basically considered between fifty five hundred yards long, like seventy five hundred yards. Executive courses are between three and five thousand yards. There is not a single public golf course in Southeast Florida that is in the range of five thousand to six thousand yards. There's not. Reason being is because there's two classes of golf courses. There's like regulation and then there's executive. We would be the only public golf course in Southeast Florida under six thousand yards if we didn't. That's how it does affect. That's how it does affect us. It's, you know, Commissioner McFoy, all due respect, we were thinking that maybe our golf course wouldn't look as good. Uh, we, we, we wouldn't lose much if we, if we dropped the yardage, but actually I, I think we would lose, I think we'd drop down as far as our reputation is concerned. Okay, now, if we do make it a par three, we can, we can, we can get it, there's creative ways to probably get it back to that yardage, but it's gonna cost money, just so you know, it's probably gonna cost us, you know, in the realm of anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build an extra tee box to get that back, just to take that into consideration. About budget expenditures, so, just so you know, the overall, which, just really don't wanna be a golf course under six thousand.
Well, we're also the only golf course in the intercoastal. You know, I mean, we, we have more than our yardage to offer. Um, I don't know that, um, you know, and I, I, I only observe, I don't play golf. But thank you for the information. Um, Mr. Segrich?
No, I was finishing the motion, that was it.
Oh, okay. So your motion is to uh temporary three par. Come back, talk to the neighbors, come back with, you know, talk to the neighbors over the next, we'll talk to Marty about what, how long. And I'm sure the neighbors will give us feedback because they are not a shy group. Um, civility is always um appreciated, I have to say, however. Um, so, your motion is that?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Ms. Malaga?
Nay.
Nay. Alright, thank you. So, um, it passes four to one. Thank you very much.
I, I nay.
I, we both nay.
Oh, you're nay, okay.
I'm a nay.
So it passes three to two with uh Commissioner May and Vice Mayor Malaga nay.
Madam Mayor, I will say that we'll also keep track of uh revenue as well and kind of take a look at that as well because if you recall, um, we just started becoming profitable on our course two, three years ago. So we're just now getting to a point where we're attracting more and more people, so we'll keep an eye on that as well.
Okay, and we'll ask staff to, to keep on that pretty closely so that if it starts going down, we'll
Are we spending this, are we, we're just changing it to a par three, we're not spending a hundred thousand dollars to bring it back? I tell you, you're just gonna shorten the hole. Nothing else on any of the other uh holes to extend, to make it longer and back to six thousand. We're just shortening it for now.
Yes, I believe that's the direction. And just to keep in mind, this is our slower season, so it'll be challenging to track revenue right now. It is our slower season and we are heading into rainy season. So come and play golf at the Lake Worth Municipal Golf Course. Best bargain and most beautiful course in Palm Beach County. Okay, so, thank you very much. I think you have a direction and we'll keep on. And I'm sure we'll be hearing from you folks and thank you very much for waiting so long and your patience. Because we don't have enough to read.
Sure, come on.
Well, I, I, hey, Hannah. Um, okay, so. Commissioner Liaison reports and comments. Let's start with District One. Sarah Malaga, what's your?
And a mayor, you have two items that you moved off of consent.
Oh, that's fine.
Resolution twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Um, so, uh, resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-five, establishing the proposed millage rate for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six.
Madam Mayor, we do have our Finance Director Yannick on.
Mr. Yannick?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Alright, yes, for the record, Yannick is in Ohio with finance. Uh, this, this item is a requirement by the county, uh, so they could connect its taxes on my behalf. And, and the millage rate has not changed since the previous year.
Ah, thank you. Any more explanation needed?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-five establishing, establishing the proposed tentative voter approval debt rate for fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-six.
Yes, so this is, this is the same uh, same, same requirement by the county for the debt service. Uh, but this time the millage rate is decreasing by uh more than fifty percent. Uh, simply because we have sufficient fund balance to make up for the uh, uh, principal and interest for the next uh year.
Could you hear all that? Could you go over that one more time?
Yes, so this, this is for the debt service, for the, for the geo-bond uh that we issued back in twenty-two thousand seventeen and eighteen for the uh road improvements. The millage rates for this year will be decreased from point nine-two to point four-zero. And the main, and the main reason why we're decreasing, we have sufficient fund balance in our debt service uh to make up the difference.
Thank you. Um, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions, Ms. May?
I see you. Okay, um, yeah, I, I was told that this is just the proposed, so we don't need to go into any detail on it, but um, I do, when we bring it back, I do wanna talk about if, I, I think it's great that we're decreasing taxes. Um, but I also wanna know, you know, if it was my mortgage and I kept paying the same amount, would I overall decrease the amount of interest that I'm paying and decrease the length of time I'm paying? And which, which way would be a better way to go about doing that? What is the benefit of doing that versus lowering the percent that we're charging the residents now? But I also know that we're gonna be raising prices on other things. So I, I get that. I just wanna make sure that we have that conversation.
Thank you.
Yes, this, we, uh, we will bring this item out during the budget workshops, check it for the
I can't wait. Um, thank you. And uh, do I have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Passes five to zero. Uh, that, that was the two of them, correct? We're done.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Now we are on Commissioner Comments and Liaison Reports. Why don't we start with District One?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, my only thing that I wanted to talk about tonight is I feel um as though there hasn't been very good communication with what's happening on the garage in regards to design and where we are with the W Moda um project of the parking garage that we approved. I was under the impression when we approved it that we would have more updates um in regards to design, cost, layout. And I'm just hoping that staff has something on the books in the next two weeks to bring us into the loop. Um, and I'd like to know, you know, from staff who's been attending the meetings, what their input is, like to hear from Yannick. You know, how he feels it looks, you know, financially, even though we have a cost certain, is it, you know, are we still in line with everything we approved?
Alright. I see Mr. Brown taking notes.
Yeah, it's maybe the second meeting in July, like it's always been.
Okay, second meeting in July. Stay tuned. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Alright, thank you very much. District Two.
I, I think I'll pass for the moment.
Well, now's your chance. It's now or never. I'm going down the districts.
Yes, I understand that. Um, I was hoping I could pull it up, but I, I can't find it at the moment. Um, one of the members of our commission asked our attorneys to spend time and then the Palm Beach County Ethics Commission to spend time because they were convinced that another member of the commission was in danger of violating or shouldn't be allowed to vote on things. And I just wanna make it clear to everyone and to the public that um the Ethics Commission did spend time and I suspect our attorneys also spent some time at expense. Um, and it was very clear that there was absolutely no issue there. Um, there was no there there. And we sometimes comment here that people have personal agendas or that we chase down rabbit holes or we follow up, uh, staff shouldn't be asked to do personal projects. Um, and I just wanna make it clear that in my mind, that was um not very appropriate. And I'm glad that it came back unambiguously. There was no issue. Thank you.
Thank you. District uh, two, three.
Three, uh, thank you. Um, just a couple of things. One, um, I, I wanna, a couple of thank yous. First, I wanna thank Code and um Healthier Lake Worth Beach. There was a resident in my district who really needed some help and Healthier Lake Worth Beach came out and helped and um as well as another one that, that was sent in. So I think that that relationship between our code enforcement um department and Healthier Lake Worth Beach to put the, the help where it is needed with, throughout the city is essential. And I'm really grateful for that. Um, the second thing I wanted to thank is Public Works and um for hiring the pressure washing people. Um, we got people calling from downtown today saying, thank you, it looks really nice. Um, Ms. Segrich and I were walking down there earlier, you could smell it.
Yeah.
Smell the bleach. Um, so that is good. And I thank you to the CRA for paying for that, I believe. They, ten thousand dollars to that. Um, two things. One, I um, I, 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 I know that I was not on the prevailing side of the vote to spend the money on um moving Southam. And I just wanna kind of bring it back up that we're, we're making decisions here, trying to save money and, and I just think that I, I can't bring it back, but I know it may come back up. I think we really wanna consider how fiscally responsible that decision was.
Moving Southam, of seventeen Southam.
Um, and the other thing, and this is for staff and anybody who cares to listen, this August second date for the second budget meeting is really, I'm teaching that day and if there's any way we can change that, I would really appreciate it. Um, cuz I do have to be absent a couple other times and that's literally right at the beginning of the school year. So, um, if it can be changed, I would be really grateful. If not, I will do everything I can to be here. And that's what I have right now. So, that's it. August twentieth. It's the second budget meeting.
And it's a long.
Yeah, and I just, I wanna be at it. But I teach that day.
Alright, um, well, I certainly think it's best for all five of us to be at a budget meeting. So, um, and I know that we're
I mean, if I have to take it off, I will, but I really don't want to. So if there's any way that we don't have to have it on that day, I would be really appreciative.
Well, let's, um,
It would be helpful. Might be a specific reason why we had to. I don't know. I'm just putting it out there.
Well, I think the, the poor staff is pulling their hair out, trying to figure out when everybody's ready. Um, I, what I think would be helpful for staff would be for all of us to give them a little email about what dates you're unavailable. So they have it in front of them so that they can see what, um, yeah, okay, good, thank you. Um, what dates are completely, I'm gonna be gone for like five days in the beginning of August, but um, uh, other than that. And, and there's, and then August, there's a Florida League Cities Conference as well. So it's a busy month. So, yeah, so I am, uh, yeah, okay, alright, so, that's it. Okay, District Four?
Um, I wanted to echo some of Sarah's sentiments about the parking garage designs. I would like to see some
Yeah.
before the actual meeting, um, cuz I know they are floating around and I think that would be good. Um, South Palm Park Neighborhood got some new stop signs. They were very thankful, so thank you to Public Works for making that happen. Um, and well, we'll see how those work out. Um, Snook Island and Bryant Park continuing to, to be focused on with PBSO and thank, very thankful to them for their support and problem solving as we, we work through these complex issues um that are both a matter of law, but also compassion and just figuring it out as a, as a city. And they, they've been great through that process. And the people in the neighborhood have seen um some positive change and have noticed and made comments, um, and they are thankful. So I wanted to pass that along. Um, a couple of weeks back, uh, attended the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches um, where they honored uh Jeff Coons um, uh, for the lifetime um kind of achievement award. And it was just, as a newly elected, it was very interesting and cool to kind of hear the perspective that, that someone who's been in politics as long as he has and seen the things that he's seen and the change that he's brought about. Um, so that was, that was, that was nice to see and, and to, to be involved and, and kind of gain a little bit of wisdom there. Um, we had our first meeting of the EDU Task Force, um, which was very educational.
What task force?
The EDU, the Education Task Force.
Okay.
Um, and uh, it, it was very interesting. Um, the members of the task force have spent a, a long time uh really gaining the trust and confidence of the principals at the schools that they are liaisons to. And it took a while for them to get to some of the root problems that, that they are having. And one clear problem um is attendance. And they, they, every, every single school echoed that attendance is one of their biggest issues. Um, and then some more interesting ones related to that, um, the logistics of getting people to the schools where um you may have a family that lives within a two-mile radius of um two different schools. And the older children have to walk the younger children to the first school and then walk the, themselves back to their school. And weather comes into play and so on, and this all affects attendance. So I'm looking forward to working with them and trying to come up with some creative ideas how we as a city can help with, with some of these challenges that they're having. Um, and then lastly, tomorrow I'll be attending the Palm Beaches Tourism Master Plan Planning Board. Um, you know, there, there's a lot of interesting things going on there. Um, and I think as a city, we can benefit um, from, from being at the table in those discussions cuz, you know, we have a lot of changes we're looking to make with our primary assets and those assets have to do with tourism. So I'm, I'm hoping that maybe we can make some inroads and get some dollars or at least get some attention with the good things that we have going on. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, a couple of things. Um, okay, um, first of all, I was at Green Acres at a meeting at their lovely City Hall and Community Center. Um, and they have a magazine that they hand out and I was, I really like it. It has, has a lot about the city, what's going on. It has um some of those things that you would you are close, thank you. Um, and I would just like to give this as an example of something that maybe we can look forward to. I'm gonna give it to Jamie and just, um, hopefully we can do something like that. It was pretty substantial. I really liked it. Um, I was um just in New York City and it was interesting on some very, I used to live in the city and on some very small streets. They were like in the thirty years or whatever, more than that, since I lived there. They had planted some trees on these very narrow streets. And I was, I shouldn't have taken pictures, I didn't. I mean, the trunks were about this big. They were tall, they were leafy, it made the street look so, it was transformed the neighborhood. So I would like to, you know, how can we just keep working on getting more trees? Um, and speaking of trees, I had asked, you know, are, the tree in front of Dave's is a dead, a dead issue. Um, there's nothing to be done because the roots, my understanding is that the roots of the tree are going under the building, they're about to enter the plumbing. Um, so sadly, it seems like that's inevitable that that tree is gonna go. And I think that we do need some more and that's, that's what I've heard. And what I do think, we do need to look a little bit more about what trees, you know, we do plant there. We, if, if berries are gonna drop, that's not even. So let's take a look at that. Um, I, tomorrow, I get to drive to Tampa to the United uh Conference of, United States Conference of Mayors. Um, yeah, yeah, these are always so exciting. And then on Sunday, I drive from Tampa to Orlando to go to the Florida Public Pension Conference. So I have a very exciting week ahead of me. Um, last, this past Saturday, the Leisure Services put on what's called Founder's Day. It was a wonderful event. There were not enough children. One of the continuing challenges that we have, any, every government has, is communication. How do we get the word out to them? We have a lot of younger families, we have a lot of kids moving to the city. How do we get the word out? This is a rhetorical question. How do we get the word out to people that live here? What's going on? I mean, it's just, it's really a challenge and, and we all have to face that. Um, so I would just like to, if y'all have some ideas how to do that, let us know. Um, I am very encouraged by the PBSO homeless outreach. They're really working the, the parks and they're really trying to do what they can do and well, they have, you know, they give us reports and it seems like they're doing some uh, some good things. Um, oh, issues for, there's an issues forum. The, the, I'm gonna, Jamie, I'm gonna ask you full guides. This is that issues forum I keep asking you about, that's part of the Mick, the Mick Vic, yeah. Um, they are asking that if I would be appointed as the representative to the issues forum. So I don't know if we can do that right now or whether we have to put this on a, an agenda. It's an issues forum about, well, you know as much about it as I do. The Mick Vec, um, it's a well, you know as much about it as I do, the McVic, um, it's a inter-county, oh God, I never remember it's, I never remember what the acronym is. It's horrible, it's the worst acronym. Um, but they do, I have gone to some of the meetings and um I would like to, you know, continue to do that. I have the flexibility to do that. So, can we do that now as just something or do you want to put it on the agenda and make it a competition? What do you say?
First, we need to know whether McVic is a type of backing thing.
No, it's not. It's, it's a community thing. It's, it's, I mean, it's
Within the community?
It, it's a county, it's a county, it's a county, county issues forum. And they meet and then they have, um, you know, it's mobility, it's that kind of stuff they're talking about, so um if you want to put it on the agenda, I, it's fine, I don't care, um, but I, I'd be happy to serve on it.
Can Jamie give a little more direct, um, I guess a little more clarity on exactly which forum it is?
Yeah, I can add that to the next agenda, so we have a little
A little backup, I think a backup would be good, yeah.
But there are multiple, um there are multiple initiatives in county, uh, where you have multiple representatives from the different municipalities that deal with a lot of the issues you spoke about. There are ones that are more concentrated on transportation. There are ones that are looking at, you know, the county-wide transportation plan, they're looking at doing it right now. You have some that are looking at tourism. So it's just another one of those um groups that that get together, so I can put some
Okay, then give some backup, because Mc, I mean, and that, that when you go, when I go to those meetings, they throw those acronyms around, like everybody knows what they're talking about. And I'm like, let's make that news. So, um, so that would be uh, that would be um something I'd be interested in. Thank you for doing that. Um, yeah, I mean, we have, you know, it's very funny because the, the prospect of the triple P's coming into the golf course and people wanting to do more things, developers wanting to do more things in the city. You know, and and it would be lovely if we could just put a glass bubble over the city and and pay our bills that way. But we can't. So what I'm asking, I mean, what I'm just saying that everybody I think knows this is that there are changes coming. I mean, there are things that we have to do to increase the income. Our expenses are going up just like everybody else, so we have to be aware of the balance, which I talk about all the time, between development and keeping our little town. So, um, but I, this, the reaction to no development, you know, no big buildings. We have to get away from that a little bit because we have to have some income. We have got to do something in terms of development and um it's gonna be controversial, but God knows, we've had that before. So I just want to get, and I'm talking to the residents. We have a whole, you know, as I meet new people, I went to the College Park um, picnic and stuff, as with the people that are moving into the city now. They're a little younger, they have children, they're a little more affluent. That's with the prices going up with houses. And they have, you know, I, I'm not gonna be here forever. But I would like, I, I want, I'm interested in talking to the younger people about what their vision is in this place in twenty years from now. Well, I've had that opportunity and I think that we should listen to the younger people that aren't quite as reactive to the nostalgia that, that a lot of the older people have. So just, just putting that out there. So, um, that's pretty much all I have and we were gonna go to the city manager now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as far as the, the calendar and everything, uh, if you guys just kind of keep uh, the days you're not here updated on your calendar, that helps a lot as far as planning things. We'll obviously still check with everyone, but that will automatically eliminate a lot of dates that we won't even bother looking at and then
Well, we're gonna give you emails, we're gonna send emails to the clerk.
Yeah.
Notices of Unavailability. Show them whoever.
Show them.
Okay.
Um. Two quick things, obviously we have the uh, the special meeting next Thursday on the twenty-sixth and at five o'clock, we start the interviews for the CRA. I'll fill the CRA positions, which we have five now, they're gonna need to be filled.
Five, oh yeah.
Yeah, it's way five. Um, and the special meeting following that at six o'clock. Also is Representative Tindrich uh mentioned earlier when she was here. Um, late last night, they did pass the, the legislature, a hundred and fifteen point one billion dollar uh bill. Um, we did have, as I sent to you guys last week, um, three of our water projects
Yep.
Um, in that budget that was just passed. The governor does have line item veto power though, however, so we're fingers crossed that uh that our products do make it in, but that was that ninth
That was the timeline when he's gonna do, we, it's, it's pretty quick. We'll know pretty quickly whether he's gonna do it or not, like this week, I think.
Yeah, um, I know, I think he's in France right now. I'm not sure when he gets back, but um yeah, so we'll, we'll find out pretty quickly here. Um.
Say prayers.
We've seen from past years what happens in this little timeframe between uh the actual passing of the budget and when we get the finalized version. But uh, that was the three projects, the Ninth Avenue South Outfall Restoration, which is three hundred and seventy-one thousand, Ten Avenue South and Dixie Stormwater Improvements, which was seven hundred and fifty thousand, and then the Dual Zone Modern World, which is also seven hundred and fifty thousand. So um, if that remains, that's a good thing for us and that'll obviously be the first time we've gotten something in quite a while.
Quite a while.
So, um, that's all I got.
Good Jared, thank you very much. Attorney, got anything? Go Panthers. Who are they playing?
That's why Tiana ran out of here.
Yeah, my husband doesn't watch hockey so much. Um, motion to adjourn, do you have a second? No, we're done.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Uh, Ms. May.
And the second?
Second.
Mr. Segridge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there a vote?
There's a vote, it's, uh, yes, with favor.